Okay, it is 6:44. Can I get a motion to open the budget workshop?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. At this point, we will hold the statute of rights. The pledge of allegiance till the meeting opens up. And we will start with the budget workshop. I believe, Mr. Kenter, you will be presenting first.
Yes.
Okay, we did receive the presentation a few hours ago. So usually, we hold our questions off, but I'm thinking this time because we may have some more questions that we can kind of just jump in with point of information clarification.
Sounds good.
Do you want these slides off?
No, no, I think they might need them for...
Is that in the binder? This is right?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Under this date.
And Susan's not coming. She's still quite sad.
So January, or do you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board, Superintendent Graves. I'm Dr. Philip Kenter, your school business administrator. And with me tonight is Barbara Beckhamus, our special ed director and director of people personnel services. And tonight, we're going to be presenting budget workshop number five, and which is entitled "Special Education." We're going to go over the BOSI services, debt service, transfers to other funds, and the budget adoption presentation. So that's what we're going to do tonight. And I'm going to turn the podium over to Mrs. Beckhamus, who's going to talk about some of the special ed education highlights.
I just thought I would introduce the budget by telling you some of the things that we've been working on this year. And within the budget, I planned funds to continue to support some of the things that we're doing. So the first one is to support professional development and the purchase of materials for instructing students with reading disabilities and especially dyslexia. Dyslexia is a term that I think the board has heard, especially this year. And there are some evidence-based programs that some of our teachers have been trained in, but I want to continue to build our program for working with students with a specific kind of reading disability. When I first took over as pupil personnel director, we were using a reading program called Phonographics. I mean, your boys were probably instructed using that. And that started, not to deteriorate, but over the years, not all the teachers were trained in it, and the reading program was not as consistent. So I worked with Mr. Malone, and we started bringing foundations into the elementary school. And Carol Mason became the consultant and trained our teachers kindergarten through second. And that was to teach the beginning reading skills to all of the children, but it helped us to really begin to read flag students who needed more than just the regular instruction in the classroom. And then we continued with Just Words, which is a program for children three through five. And we even had some of our middle school teachers come over and get trained in that. And as the years went on, we began some, it's sort of the Rolls Royce of teaching children with reading disabilities, the Orton-Gilliam program and the Wilson Intensive. So now we have several teachers that are trained in that. And let's see, I had a teacher, actually, the speech therapist asked me that she would like to be trained in Orton-Gilliam. So the more that we can get, especially with the scheduling, more people trained, I think that we're in pretty good shape with the reading.
And I have a question about specifically the reading. If we train more staff, does that mean we need to outsource less with consultants coming in?
You mean like... Yes, well, for example, the Wilson Intensive.
Right.
I had a student, and I didn't have her to be trained in it. And so that I had to get a tutor from Shelter Island, but I sit with her for two hours every afternoon to meet and building with her and the students, and they are not going to do that.
So it's better for the district and the kids, and it also could save us money, which is great.
Yeah, and every time the teachers go through professional development to help a specific disability, it just helps someone in teaching. You just help everybody, you know, you get it for that specific person.
And one thing that Barbara has been fabulous at, and we'll have to make sure that we have this with our leadership moving forward, is when you identify early, which these programs help do, that a child can read and are capable in math, by kindergarten, first and second grade, prior to reaching third grade, which is when you're learning to read in kindergarten, first and second grade, and you're reading to learn in third grade. And if you can't do that, then problems like behavior and other things start to escalate. So that by the time a child's in fifth or sixth grade, and if they're not reading on grade level, then the problem becomes so much bigger and also much more extensive. And that child isn't happy in school. So what you want to do is do exactly what Barbara's doing, have a huge bag of tricks to help, you know, that child. There's so many learning styles.
And I'm finding now that the students are going through the foundations program, I was thinking about the students who really need more of that individual instruction or small group. A lot of them just moved into our district. They might be E&amp;L students. I don't find a lot of our own children with significant reading deficits. Okay, the second thing is to provide consultants in professional development for enhancing our integrated co-teaching model, and particularly improving best practices for integrating students with autism spectrum disorder and Down syndrome. Because as you know, when we started the self-contained program three years ago, as well as bringing some other students and integrating them into the kindergarten program. As the children get older, the teachers really need more help and best practices in instructing their children. So presently, we have Diane Ripple, who is a consultant who works with our teams, our inclusion teams, helping them with our children with Down syndrome. And we also have consultants from the Institute for Autism and from a company called Maranglick. And they're working with the teachers, training the teachers, consulting with the teachers, meeting with the parents. And again, we may be spending more money on the consultants now, but as the teachers become more experienced, you know, we won't need as much of that, but it's new. And finally, enhancing ABA services through professional development for teachers and teaching assistants. I'm trying to develop a cadre of registered behavior technicians. We really struggle, and I think the board has heard it with some people who've come to the board meeting, about how hard it is to find resources on the East End for children with autism. And one of the biggest difficulties is finding people after school to provide these ABA services. So I spoke to Katie today, and I'm proposing either at the end of this year or next year to train, to be an ABA, a registered behavior technician. It's best if you have your teaching license, but you don't have to be a teacher. You can be a teaching assistant. And by being supervised by a BCBA, you can go into the homes because it's intensive. It could be two hours every single day. Some of these students are getting 10 hours of ABA.
What's a BCBA?
A board-certified behavior analyst.
Okay, and that's the ABA?
And so that's the ABA. The RBT could be teachers and teaching assistants who are working under the supervision of a BCBA.
So RBTs do not have ABA training?
No, no, no. So that's what I'm trying to develop so that, you know, we have more people willing to do it. The other part is that nobody's going to come to Sag Harbor to work for two hours on Monday and then go home and then come back to it.
No.
So the successes have been when I've had a teacher who was willing to do the after-school services. So I just wanted to highlight those because, not that that's the major part of my budget, but those are some of my goals going forward.
And again, that's early intervention, getting those children as young as possible to get those skills, get that adoption of where they're atypical and to learn all of that ability to matriculate in and understand that typical world really helps them so that they can thrive in the school setting. And that's what you want, help them thrive in the school setting, to understand all those crazy social worlds.
This slide just takes us through the budget for the special education department. This is the current budget we're in, and this is the budget that's being proposed. The most significant increase would be in contractual line. Here, we have a slight increase. Overall, the increase for next year is $105,000. And for salaries for instructional and non-instructional, for next year's budget went up $147,000, or a 5.04% increase.
Phil, could you go back to that slide?
Yep.
I had a question on the second column. What did you say? It's contractual and... What does that stand for?
Conferences.
Yes, that's correct.
Conferences and contractual. So is that different than training?
Yeah, that, the contractual would be the people that Barbara's talking about. Bring people in to serve our special needs population. And a lot of those, that those people are individualized companies. And a lot of them are offering one-on-one services to these children. So we've seen an increase with that category for next year.
Yeah, I thought it stood for conferences and continued education.
Oh, yeah.
So I thought those were the funds that were earmarked for the professional training.
Right.
That's not the case.
No, we have, yes, we will not go back. There's money in that line, but most of the money is for private companies that we have to bring in.
Individual contractors.
Yeah, exactly. That's where the bulk of the money is, yeah. So that's really the special ed. And now I want to bring you into the BOSI's contract.
Can I just ask a question that drives in?
Sure, absolutely.
So is that in here? Because I apologize, I couldn't get away from work today to look at it. Is that broken out?
Yeah, all the breakout, the breakout is in your binder.
It is. So we'll see the consultants separate from the...
Absolutely. You'll see all the breakdown. All the lines are in there.
So after this, we can go through it, and then we can get comfortable with it, and then we can go out.
Right, right. And it's pretty self-explanatory.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for that detail.
I just want to add that some of our consultants also provide services. So it's not just what we would be paying the professional to come and consult with us, but if they're providing ABA, or if they're developing a behavior plan. So those numbers can grow if they provide those kinds of services.
Right. But it's, in the budget, it's lumped in together, that wouldn't be separate?
Well, if, for example, I'll put, say, Maranglick. So they're a consultant, but they also provide a teacher who has been working one and a half days with one of our students who comes into the school. So it's not just like professional development, it's actually providing services directly to the child.
I just want to show you real quick. When you go to the point, you're going to see all the line items for the staff. I redacted the names of the staff, but the salaries are there.
Okay.
And then on the, then you're going to see like the tuition, you're going to see the breakouts, all the different schools and agencies that Barbara works with.
Right. Yeah, I was just more, I was just, I appreciate that. I was just wondering, when we get a chance to look at this, if we're going to be able to tell, you know, who we're paying to actually give the service versus the other stuff you're talking about.
Yeah, so you'll see the chart. And then in addition to that, in your binders, I also put the full budget in line for line, which is in there, and the percentages like you had.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Sure.
You're done?
You're done. Now I'm going to talk about BOSI's.
Barbara, I want to thank Barbara for her amazing leadership too, while we have an opportunity. Because this is no small feat, all the work that she's done in supporting our fragile students.
I'll be back. I mean, I'll be back too soon.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to take a word about the BOSI services. BOSI's provides services to the district that we can't do in-house. And there's a consortium of school districts that participate with BOSI. So we get the best pricing that we can really get through them. And I also wanted to mention that as I walk you through all the line items, and again, all these line items are in your binders, there's nothing new. These are all the services that we currently have this year, what we've had in previous years. You'll see the pricing, you'll see the previous year's price, which is this year. You'll see what's proposed for next year. Any of the increases, we were told by BOSI's to plan for a 2% increase across the board. So you'll see in many of the line items, I've got 2% built in. And then if there's a specialty thing, and you'll see some specialty things, particularly in Barbara's line with the special ed, you know, if there were, there are services that she needed through BOSI's for the special education children. You'll see deviations with some of those line items. But pretty much, the BOSI's budget that we're going to walk through is pretty flat. It's pretty straightforward. It's everything we have. And again, there's nothing new here. So the, we're in the workers' compensation consortium with them, which I participate, and it's a pool of all the different school districts out here in the East End. And that's a great program. The Questar services I use constantly with state aid planning. They keep us posted with the due dates, or all the myriad of reports and forms and the due dates. And if we're not sure about something, we call Questar. And they've got at least eight people on staff, and they walk us business officials through what we have to do. You're going to see, for example, the property tax report card that you'll be approving tonight, hopefully. They changed it again this year, and they put an ad on. All the reserves are in there now. Every year, they change something. And so when we have questions, we call Questar, and they tell us what the changes are, how to implement them, or they provide us more clarity. So these are all services that we get through BOSI. Katie mentioned previously that we're very big with BOSI's with the shared services, the cooperative bidding. I'm able to buy a lot of things that we need here in the district without having to put them out for bid because BOSI's did the bid for us. And we're getting the, they guarantee us we're getting the lowest pricing that we can get on a lot of these items. So anything that I can buy through BOSI's in their cooperative bid program, we try to do that. And we find that their vendors are very reputable. They vet them out. They make sure that we're getting good vendors and at a really good price. So these are just examples of the services that we buy through BOSI's. The EAP program, which, and again, I don't know what you know or you don't know, so please forgive me if I'm explaining some of this stuff or overlaying, you know it. But we have a wonderful EAP program, employee assistance program. It's very confidential. And it's offered to our entire staff. So if we have an employee that might need counseling, or whether it be for drugs, or alcohol, or family, or just situations, they have counselors. They work with the staff, with their families. It's all confidential. And this is a service, it's a wonderful service that BOSI's offers our staff. We've got the subcalling service, the, all the online service, the media communications work that Scott works with there. All the different services that BOSI's offers, it's all listed here. And you can see all the, the amounts are flat, with the exception, I built in a 2% increase because that's what they tell me to expect. The health and safety consultant, he works closely with Marcus and myself. We have questions on whether it be on-the-job training for the custodial staff, or training classes, or anything to do with asbestos abatement, or safety, or whatever it is. They've got staff to help us with those things. This is all the computer support that we get through BOSI's, like finance manager, which is the business offices, you know, for payroll and purchasing and accounting. They support us with that. We're going to be upgrading the system later on this year to a more, a newer, more robust system. The testing, the scanning, the e-school for the attendance. So all that program is through BOSI's.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about the pricing? I never asked this before, but I'm wondering, the amount that we get charged, because a lot of schools, most of the school districts use all the same stuff, a lot of it, right? School due to whatever, the Ames Web. Are we, do they figure out our amount based on our student population or our budget? Like, how do they figure how much we have to pay versus East Hampton or Southampton or another school district?
It's normally based on the student population.
The enrollment numbers?
So some of like the programs that we get will just be for the elementary school. Let's say it's a K through three program. It's just the per student?
Like, for example...
A person who is actually using it, or the student population in the school?
So if it's, so let's say it's the Ames Web, and that Ames Web map is only used for kindergarten to third-grade children. It's just, you know, so 60 children per grade level. It's the, you know, it's the four grades times 60 per grade level.
And then certain things aren't per item. Like, they run our W4s and our 1099s at the end of the year. They charge us on a per-item basis. The EAP is based on how many employees we have. So it's usually, it's population-based, whether it be staff or student.
Okay.
And so you have all this detail in your binders. I know we're a little bit tight on time. There's nothing unusual here. It's all pretty straightforward, everything that we currently use with them.
And the BOSI's, I'm sorry, the BOSI's services that the board uses is separate in the board's budget. Is that correct?
It's, I have it listed here. So you can see, all the BOSI services I have listed here. But from an accounting standpoint, I break out, it's in the 1010 codes, all your board stuff.
Got it. Thank you.
That way, we can count it for it in the right spot.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Dr. Kenter, I just had a question. I don't know if you can go back a few pages.
Absolutely.
And I had to ask, Katie, I think you've given me an answer. My mic now, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
The GAZBIE 75 planning?
Right.
There was a shift from last year.
Huge amount, went up to like $10,000.
Do we know why that is?
Sure do.
Sure do.
Unfortunately, I sure do. Every year, New York State mandate, the new mandates that school districts have to adhere to. And it used to be called GAZBIE 45. Now they've upgraded it to GAZBIE 75. It's an internal accounting that BOSI's does on behalf of our school district. And they're looking at our internal accounting function pertaining to our staff and benefits and employees. And it's a closer look. We're paying that extra money for the upgrade. And we have no choice in the matter. It's a mandate for all school districts. That is their fee for the actuarial to come in and actually take a closer look at our staff, the benefits, including the retirement plan. So that's what that's for. That's exactly what that's for.
For the, so just to, because you did a great job explaining, but it's even harder. Is what, what is not in our, remember when we did our financial forecast, and we were looking at what's going to happen four years from now, five years from now? They're, they want to know more clearly the financial forecast on school districts when people start retiring. Now, we have really smart contracts where, when our teachers retire, they don't get to take 150 sick days and say, oh, I want this big payout. But a lot of school districts do have that. So now they want a really clear forecast on that, but that costs money. So now that they're, and they're asking BOSI's to do that kind of financial for, adding that to the financial for...
I mean, the money to pay to have a forecast created.
Exactly, right, exactly. So again, it's, they're looking for more auditing.
That's exactly.
And they're having us pay for it. But it's, again, it's to create a clearer picture because there's so many districts. And could they potentially be at risk of defaulting at some time in the future, which we're all afraid of? But this, this district, over the years, in creating their contracts, has done a really good job of not having those big balloon payments at the end, that some districts have.
And then if I, I'm going to throw on, I'm going to add on something else. One of the things that impressed me with Sag Harbor and why I wanted to work here is you, as a board, you have, you have an awesome claims auditor. And she's very thorough at what she does, and I'm very impressed by her. But not only does she check, and she, you, I don't know if you know this, she reports directly to the board, not to me. So I interact with her, but she reports directly to you. And she is checking to make sure we're paying all the bills properly. But in addition to that, she's also checking our payroll, each and every bi-weekly payroll. And she's looking at all the details. She's looking at every employee. And this is over and above what I do and what my assistant does. We're checking to make sure that every employee is listed, and all the hours are proper, and the rates of pay are proper, and the deductions are proper, and that the amount's going towards their retirement, and all that is proper. But she's checking it as well. And so when we're giving BOSI's our information, which is coming out of finance manager, which is an excellent piece of software, they've got clear paperwork. They've got clear documentation coming from an excellent program that's actually been triple-checked out of this district, including a claims auditor. And a lot of school districts don't do that. So that when it's going, they're getting the absolute accurate of information so that the reporting back is absolutely accurate. And I have to tell you, after looking at your financial statement, you've got solid reports going on here. You really do. So you really should be proud of yourselves with the steps that you have taken with what's been done here. That's all part of it. So, what else? You know, the other thing, and I know there's a lot to digest, and I know that you only got these this afternoon, but if you have any other specific questions, if you want to give Katie or me a call, or I'm going to be out in the next two days, but if you let Katie know...
And we're presenting this entire budget again on Monday, too.
True, we're doing that again. So if you have any questions, you can get back to your, answer them Monday. But it's all pretty straightforward.
I just had another question in regards to the BOSI's communications. So it looks like last year, we used their communications consultant. And this year, we're not going to use them. Or is that line just missing?
No, we're going to use communications.
Well, what happened, we had $80,000 this year budget, and we dropped it down to $30,352. That was the money that Katie spoke with you about with, you know, with our own, we're doing our own internal operation now. So there wasn't an additional cost in money to the district. It was just a shift of money.
So we're still using their communications person?
To a significantly lesser degree, yeah.
And who's picking that up, that workup?
Well, you have...
That, I believe, is the 50 that we earmarked for our communications.
That's correct.
But weren't they doing something different than what our internal communications person would be doing?
We still have money in the line for all of, for...
Everything that they're doing, yes.
We still, we'll still have it earmarked for their base service, which I, which is their emergency services. And the, for the base syntax services, we're not giving the base syntax services up, which is their emergency calls, their budget newsletter.
Oh, so BOSI's is syntaxed?
No.
Yeah, we contract through BOSI's for syntax.
Right, but syntax is a separate for...
It's a company that BOSI's hired, that all the school districts use if we subtract through BOSI's.
But I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what services have we been paying for for them now that we are no longer going to be buying from them in this budget?
So they, they send out a communication person that does five newsletters, that does, that comes to the district, you know, one day a week, that kind of thing. That, that's being, it's being set aside, but we're still holding money in the budget for something, depending on what the school district decides to move forward with.
So like, our budget newsletter, which they do.
They do. That, we're keeping that.
They're going to keep that. The quarterly newsletters.
We're not, we're not going to keep that.
So who, because they've got, they have good copywriters, they, you know, they have people that really are expert writers. Are we not doing those newsletters anymore?
No.
So there'll be no more, I, did I miss that? Did we talk about that publicly? They were going to stop doing quarterly newsletters? I don't remember that to see.
We're going to, I think that I, you know, and I think we may ever have to have future meetings on those discussions. But the newsletters that I was getting weren't, were not quality for Sag Harbor. They were not. So what we've been doing is putting out as many press releases as possible and as robustly as possible. And I think we've done a great job of that. If you do a whip of the news agencies that we've been putting out, that's what we've been doing. But they're expensive to, to put those things together and then mail those out to the community. They just didn't feel like they were...
They weren't worth it?
They felt, they felt, they felt like, like they were, we were selling something, you know? They felt like just fan mail.
I know this is probably not the time, because we've got so much to cover, but can we have a future conversation about how we're handling all this? I was unaware that that, I'm not saying it's the wrong decision.
But there really wasn't a lot of newsletters, because we put out the budget newsletter and just three others. And I did the first, I did the beginning of the year one. So I took that away from them, and I think we did a wonderful job at the beginning of the year. So there's only two other newsletters we did not do. And we, I think we've done a great job of sending out huge packets about what we're doing with STEAM, what we're doing with, oh, the IV program. So we've been trying to create our own press relations that are much more genuine and sound much more like Sag Harbor. And Syntax has been doing those for us, but we switched. And so it was only two newsletters, and I think we saved the district a lot of money. And they sound much more genuine than sending home a generic, hey, this is us, you know?
And I always felt that they weren't, nobody wants to see Christmas pictures on, in February. Because they weren't timely.
Well, we're such a little tiny district.
Well, they were timely, but you know, by the time you collect the old stuff and send it out, I felt like we were saying...
This is what we did.
This is what we did. It was the snowflake tea, but it's almost Easter.
Rather, we did a big press release on the snowflake tea, and we had invited, you know, so we just had the IV art... Rather, we did a, a big press release on the snowflake tea, and we had invited, you know, so we just had the IV art show. And we invited Syntax to come cover the IV art show, and we had, um, SacHarbor Express come cover the IV art show. And we had the elementary come in and do, you know, educational programming around the IV art show. And we felt like that was a much more genuine way to handle it. But I did the, if you remember the beginning, opening of school, we did interviews with every single teacher. We had, like, here, meet the seventeen new teachers and new employees, and here's all the safety and security, and here's the new Pearson field. I think that was seventy-eight pages long, so.
Right, which is, which is too dense, I think, most people aren't gonna read seventy-eight pages, and it must've been an enormous amount of work. So I can understand why you wouldn't wanna do that again.
Well, you know, I've done that, I've done that at the start of every single school year, and I get wonderful, wonderful feedback. Probably two hundred families speak to me about how they loved it because their child got to see their new art teacher. And so they actually really liked that. So, and it's interactive, and they could look at it on their phone and go, uh-huh, uh-huh, oh, uh-huh, uh-huh, oh. So actually, I got really great feedback versus something that comes in your, in the mail, and the senior citizen says to me, how much did it cost to mail this to me? Because I'm not that interested.
Well, you could always have it electronic, but anyway, that's, again, this, I think this is a different conversation, I would just want to get, understand, cause I was unaware that the decision was made, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, and sometimes I do go rogue, and then I actually.
I don't know if it's the wrong or right, I just wanted to understand.
If you drop French out of the curriculum, that would be bad. Two newsletters, I don't, I think we'd live without it, so.
All right, so, um, this, this section of the BOSI's, it's all the library services that we get here, the library media, the digital library that we have, it's all through BOSI's. Uh, so that's the whole library package. All of our bus driver training, the physicals, the drug testing, the certification, the exams, the refreshers, all that goes through BOSI's. So that's pretty much, uh, that's my BOSI's portion of the presentation. All in all, uh, so our current year, it's eleven fifty, next year we're looking at twelve twenty-five. We're anticipating a seventy-five thousand dollar increase with the BOSI's line with all the services. And, um, and, and that's, that's the BOSI's budget. The next portion that I'd like to present to you is the district's debt service. I just wanna talk a little bit about that. So we've borrowed money through, uh, bond anticipation notes and tax anticipation notes, which are TANs. And, um, what we're looking at this year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, uh, sixty-six thousand dollars in band interest. We're anticipating seventy-four thousand, two fifty in band interest next year, so we've got a little increase there. Tan interest, we've had to borrow more money. We were, we were borrowing, um, I'm told eleven million dollars this year, we borrowed thirteen, we're looking to borrow thirteen next year. So I've got a little extra money built in, uh, for the tan interest in case we need it. There's an extra hundred thousand dollars there, I'm not saying we'll use it, but I wanna have it in there in case we need it. I don't, don't know if the board knows what that, what that's all about. Are, are you aware of why we borrowed the tax anticipation note money, all of you?
I think it's good to go over it again, because there's veteran board members and newer board members, so it never hurts.
Would you like, I'd be happy to. Absolutely, I'm happy to. I'll try to give you the Cliff Notes version. So it's really an issue about timing, it's all about timing. So we go to, uh, we have our budget vote May fifteenth. And then, uh, our budget, I'm very impressed with our budget passes every year. And so then, in October, I submit the letter to the Southampton Town and East Hampton Town of, of the levy that we're going to ask them to collect for us, they collect the money on our behalf through the taxpayers. And then that goes out with the tax bill, and that's in December. And then we start, we start getting money in around January-ish. The problem is, so that's that timing. But now we have the calendar year of a school district. And we go from July one through June thirtieth, that's, that's when our year starts and ends. So our new year starts in July first. So, so though, this budget will be a July first budget, if you think about it, we're not gonna start getting the money for this budget until January. So we're going six months with our new budget with no money. So it's a timing issue. So the way school districts, uh, make, ends meeting, pay their bills, we borrow money from a qualified lending institution, and it's called a tax anticipation note. And BNB, by the way, is one of the participators in that. So what happens, we put out a bid, and this goes through a company, uh, the vendor we use is NYMAC. And they'll put out our specifications for how much money, uh, we, we're looking to borrow. Katie and I have both told you, uh, one of the things they look at is our Moody's, uh, rating, which we have an excellent rating. And they look at, they look at a whole sheet of criteria that I think I gave you when I first started, but they look at how well we pay our bills and timeliness and the vendors we have, and, and all these things they take into consideration, including the bonds. They, they look at how strong is our ability to repay on time, and we're really, really good at it. The better you are at it with a, a strong Moody's rating, the lower we get in the interest rate. And so, so even when interest rates rise, and we have to anticipate that, but we're still getting the lowest of that rise. And, and with that, part of the bid that we look for is that whatever interest rate they wanna charge us, if we guarantee that we're going to pay it back by the certain time that we say we are, we get what's called a premium on that money. It's kinda like a rebate, if you will, on that money. So I have to put the full amount in to the budget for, for appropriation purposes. But I can tell you that you're going to get a good portion of that money back through the premium and also through the bid at the lowest, uh, bid rate that we can, that we can get.
So do we see it reflected in the year-over-year numbers? Cause I understand that our bond rating has improved during the past year, so do we see?
Well, we, let me, um, our bond rating's improved twice, and it's about to improve when they close our books for this year. They've already told us it's gonna improve, but it's not going to, the money, we're not gonna get that bond rating until the auditors close their books for this year, so.
So that's something we, we should hope to see.
And actually, you're gonna see it right here, for example, um, let me put the clicker on. In this series of bonds, where we're looking at, well, we, we've got nine, one million nine eighty-four five eighteen that we, we've already paid this year. We're budgeting one million nine seventy-five, so you could see it's already coming down.
And in spite of the fact that we're gonna be borrowing more?
We're borrowing more through the.
And paying less interest.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, Phil, when you say we borrowed more this year.
Right. Cause the budget went up, you know, the budget went up.
Just because of the budget increase, not because the payments in were not timely.
That is an issue, it's gotten better. Particularly two years ago, we had a very big issue with the town of Southampton getting, uh, timely payments to the school districts. That has greatly improved. I have to, I have to look at our cash flow. I look at our cash flow and what our expenses are every month for payroll and all of our bills. And I have to make sure until, and I'm, I have to be overly cautious and very conservative about it. So I wanna make sure that we borrow enough money that don't, that we don't run short, especially with payroll. If we really have a problem, I can hold off a bill here or there, but that's gonna hurt our, our ratings, I don't wanna do that. So I, I wanna make sure that we borrow the money we need till our money comes in from the towns. So that's kinda where we're at.
So, um, just a quick question on the lines about interest, just, just to make sure that I'm understanding it. So in two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to pay interest on the money we borrowed.
That's correct.
We spent, it actually cost a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three and eighteen cents, so we ended up having an extra three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
That's right.
So that included, you said we get money back, is that?
No, that wouldn't be there, that would be in the tan line. Well, and, and you're not gonna see it here, we, you're gonna see it in the revenue side. When, when we, we get what's called a premium based on our, uh, experience rate. So we'll get that, we'll get a lower bill at the end of the year for that.
So, so for instance, for that, you know, I, I don't expect you to know the exact number of any of this that's on another line, but like, when you say we get most of it back, it, it all goes well.
Not, not, we'll get a, we'll get a portion of it back.
Like, how, what's the range, like, the wide, you give me a wide range, like, is it forty thousand, is it five thousand?
No, no, it's not that much.
Okay.
But it's, it's.
I'm not gonna hold you to a specific number, I'm just curious, cause I thought we'd say a lot back, I didn't, I don't wanna leave, leave people with the impression that, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So I have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you might see a premium rebate to us of eight or nine thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. And then for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we wouldn't know what that is yet? It's a zero expenses? Is that because?
That's because we haven't paid it yet. It's not, it's not due to be paid until July first.
But wouldn't that be for next year, not two thousand seventeen, eighteen?
Nope.
That's the year we're in now.
That's correct, so we will pay that at the end of our calendar year.
Oh, I see, we take it out of this year's budget to cover for next year. Thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah. All right, and so this is all pretty straightforward. And, and then the last portion I wanna talk with you about is, uh, um, how we budget money into our main account, the appropriations account. And then how we have the ability to transfer that money into our other accounts if we need to. And so this doesn't mean that we are doing it, but it means that we have the ability to do it. And so let, let me explain. The first one is the transfer to school lunch. And you'll see that we have thirty thousand dollars this year budgeted, and we had expended the full thirty thousand dollars. So in other words, what we did, we subsidized our school lunch program by the thirty thousand dollars because we, we have our own in-house free and reduced lunch program, if you will, in that the children, everybody here eats. All the children get breakfast and all the children get lunch, regardless of their ability to pay. By doing that, we have to make sure that any money that we're short by what the students or the faculty and staff don't pay in the cafeteria has to be made up, made up. We make it up here, so at the end of the year, we take a look, we say, where were, how much were we short by? And this has been pretty consistent, um, so we transferred, this year, we've transferred thirty thousand dollars into the cafeteria, uh, account. I budgeted for thirty-five thousand dollars next year, uh, the five thousand dollar increase. I wanna have it in there as a safety margin, especially we, we've seen an influx of additional students in our district that we think might need that program. So I wanted to go ahead and put a safety margin in, I put an extra five thousand dollars in for next year. Special aid.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question just about the cafeteria?
Oh, huh, sure.
Cause years ago, earlier in my tenure, we had present, there was a big debate about it, which is, you know, were about, do we cover this, do we not? There was a part of the community that felt like it should be zero sum. Can you, I, can, I wanna understand why from last year to this year, our expenses have doubled.
Well.
Phil, I also don't think we know, cause I think we were talking to, um, Tom, our assistant business manager. He has not done the full analysis on this this year, because we've infused, we're buying much higher quality foods this year, much higher quality. We, um, also purchased vending machines this year.
And, and other equipment.
And stocking those. But I don't think they've done the full analysis on the, the, the costs on those because the, the use of the cafeteria has exploded. Like today, I'm walking down the hallway and I had, I had a few boys go, I had four of the lunches, Mrs. Graves, they have to have that lunch every day. I said, we're not gonna have that lunch every day. And two of the pre-K teachers walk in the guy going, we're gonna have two of those lunches today. And I said, we can't have the same lunch every day, that's not how it works. So I, I know that, and we haven't been able, cause it is budget season, it is probably the busiest time, every part of the season's busiest time. But we have not been able to evaluate how much the, the use, so the use of the cafeteria has exploded. But also what we're using, cause we're using our local farm stands to get our, our food from. So it's, it's more expensive, what we used to use, so.
And through the cafeteria, I was gonna say also through the cafeteria fund, all equipment that we buy for the cafeteria comes through that fund. So, and I know that we had to buy some new equipment down there this year.
So we bought new, we bought vending machines this year, we did buy new equipment to round out what they had.
There's two new refrigeration units.
And with that, that would be under, wouldn't, wouldn't equipment be a capital expense, and so wouldn't be a kind of?
Not, not for food service, it's a, it's under the C fund, cafeteria.
Cafeteria funds, it has to stay under there. And we also invested to be able to, um, bring lunches over to the, to the elementary school, which is literally ready to go. We're just waiting for an okay to use, um, we need an okay from New York State to be able to move the food. And so that has the special certification. So we did all this investing, investing, investing this year, and I think it's, we've seen a huge payoff. But we haven't finished that bottom line yet of that evaluation.
Right, so you just, you, you wanna be cautious and make sure that you have enough to cover, which I think, I think is wise. Uh, just one more question, and I could be remembering it correctly, so you probably have a better memory on this. I thought that the previous business official said that we were not legally allowed to cover the expenses in this. And so we were supposed to be moving away from transferring money to cover, it was really supposed to be self-sustaining unless taxpayers approved that it was gonna be funded differently, which some districts had done.
I believe our law has changed, our governor has changed the law now.
Have they, is the law different now?
The governor, the governor now says we have to feed every child.
Everyone's gotta be fed.
No, no, I, 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 that might exist, but, but, cause I remember kind of promoting that I thought everyone should, we should do that.
It changed last March.
And Jennifer saying, I'm sorry, but you cannot, the law requires that it's, so the law allows you to pay for, I, they may say you've gotta feed everybody, but what I'm wondering is legally.
Everyone, every child's gotta be fed.
And, and so you are legally allowed to pay for that, whether they have legally, technically qualified or not. You can legally use taxpayer money to feed any child.
Not any child. The chi- children, first of all, you can't shame anymore, and that's brand new.
Which is good.
That you can't shame any child, any child at all, you can't even check any child anymore. So there's no shaming, that, that's new with our governor, and I don't know that law, so don't quote me on it because I'm, we're still, I'm gonna give professional development on that, um, in the next, next month or so. But children that are free and reduced or can't prove where they are, you have to feed those children, and you can't do it in a shaming manner. So you can't give my peanut butter into a jelly sandwich or grilled cheese.
You have to offer the same treatment to anyone else now, which makes a lot of sense.
And you can't, and all, we're providing, we're not feeding those children, all we're doing is making sure that we don't go into the red. So we're, we're providing access to the cafeteria to not go into the red. So we're not providing, we're not saying, here's a slush fund cafeteria, all we're doing is a transfer of fund, a potential transfer of funds.
Right, but it is covering, I guess, you know, the question comes, is it covering things that we legally can cover? Cause it seems like there's been a shift. I mean, and again, you, I mean, you know, um, for years, we were told we had to get this number down, which is why I'm just, I'm surprised we're going in the other direction. And, and you're saying that there's an increase of students that, that do actually qualify for free and reduced, but we get refunded from the state for that.
We don't participate in that program.
That's right, we don't participate, where, is that, is that, is any of that?
We, we do participate in the, in the milk program.
We walked away from that, so now, so now we're more vulnerable in terms of increases.
But I, but I have to tell you though, um, a lot of the money that was transferred, like, of that thirty thousand dollars, like Katie was saying, we bought a lot of equipment downstairs this year.
So if we aren't gonna have to buy it next year, I would imagine the number should go down instead of that then?
Well, uh.
No?
We still have to, we still have to look at what we're gonna do with stock.
Like if there's, is there gonna be equipment there to provide for the, for the, for the elementary kids?
That's nothing to the box.
But I know, but I don't, I, I think Ken's, or Phil, Phil Kenter, we're speaking that, I think we're really just talking about the cafeteria because we are looking at shifts in laws.
Right.
I, I think that's, and, and we, and we don't know what's, what's gonna happen when we start feeding the, the, um, the elementary on the other side because we are using such high-quality food. Buying, I love buying local, but.
Most of us can't afford to buy local.
I, you know, my husband goes to these darn farm stands, and I just, I'm like, I love you, dear, but, oh. And, but he, he's right, you know, we live locally, we should support locally. And he does, you know, he has, he has very strong thoughts about what's in our food. And we grew up in a rural area where we went to local dairy farms and we looked at the farm stands, and he's like, that's the right thing to do. And he's like, and when you're feeding your schoolchildren, that's the right thing to do, and I'm like, huh, okay. But when you're a fiscal conservative, that's where it shows up.
I wanted to mention also, um, I've seen, uh, other budgets of other school districts, including where I previously deployed. Your, uh, ratio there, the amount of money that you tran, uh, budget for transfer, it's extremely low. It's very low.
Can I get a gift certificate to have lunch in the cafeteria, this is my parting gift, I've never eaten.
I'll buy you lunch.
We, we think the cafeteria should, should, um, feed the poor.
And that's what I, I wanna go to the cafeteria ones before I leave, okay, go ahead.
It's, it's really fabulous, the cafeteria.
Bring me on a date where the kids go, yuck, so I can really see if it's good.
I had lunch just today, it was really good.
I hear great things, I hear great things.
What was on the menu today that everybody wanted to eat?
Well, today we, um, we're. Today we've, um, we're homemade chicken nuggets with fresh mashed potatoes and corn. And she made these biscuits that were really outstanding with honey, and I gotta tell you, it was really great.
And some of the kids were eating them in a salad, they were taking the chicken into the, into a salad, and she makes her own homemade dressing, so.
Sounds delicious.
Yeah, very good. I just wanna wrap up, so, uh, transfer to special aid, uh, especially if, uh, for, uh, that would be for back to Barbers, uh, any of the children that, with the summer school program or whatnot. Now, we budget the money in there, but you'll see we haven't spent anything in that line, but we still have to have it in there in case it's needed. Transfer to capital, if anything's gotta be transferred, we've got money, uh, built into there. Last, this current year, we had forty thousand dollars built in, uh, next year I've got fifty thousand built in. So, when you go all the way down, the, uh, the, the difference is pretty, uh, it's a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar difference between our current year versus what I've got budgeted for next year. And I just, uh, I'd like to, to take you to the next part, cause this is now where we're getting into the, uh, the budget itself. And what I thought I would do this year, I wanted to take our forty-one million dollar budget and break it out two ways. I wanted to break it out to show it to you in terms of function. And then the next slide will be in terms of object. And that's how, uh, school districts, uh, and business officials run the expense side of the operation. So these are the major categories that we're looking at, uh, with our budget. You, you'll see seventeen, eighteen where we are now, what's proposed for eighteen, nineteen, the breakdowns in the major categories. The change, uh, you know, the, the difference in dollars, and then the percentage change, so you can see it that way. And I would, I would respectfully show you that the increases are right where, uh, you would expect them to be. Employee benefits went up, uh, and that goes back to my very first presentation between health insurance and, uh, the increases that were required to contribute with, uh, employee retirement and teacher retirement systems. You'll also see that, uh, pretty much everything else is, uh, it's the normal increases, the, uh, for salaries. I made, I put a few blurbs that you'll see on the next page, cause, uh, the definitions are down here below what, what each category is for. But I wanted now to show you the object, how it's broken down by object. And this, this brings you a little bit more detail, uh, personnel services, uh, employee benefits. And again, if you look at that second line, employee benefits, uh, when you're, you're talking about our budget for, from our current year to next year, we're looking at a one point nine million dollar increase in the budget. Almost nine hundred of it, nine hundred thousand of it is employee benefits, uh, with the increases that I had mentioned. Contractual increases, uh, you've got a small amount with the BOCs. We kept everything flat on tuition, material supplies, we reduced equipment, uh, the debt service. I think all in all, you'll see it's, it's pretty nominal, but if you look at the blurb I wrote on the bottom, it's pretty consistent over the last two years. Salaries and benefits make up seventy-seven point nine, or roughly, you know, seventy-eight percent of our budget. And la- and, and the current year we're in, it was seventy-eight point five, and the year before that was seventy-eight point one. So, we're running very consistent, if you think in terms of, of a dollar. For every dollar that we, we budget in this district, seventy-eight cents of that dollar goes towards salaries and benefits. And if you think about it, it, it makes sense because this oper- this forty million dollar operation as all of you know, it's a people business, and we're educating children, it's not a product. And you heard Barber's talk earlier, we have children that are very gifted and talented, we have children that have special needs. And for a school district, there's no cookie cutter, so we have a food service operation, we have a transportation department that, if you think about, we get these kids to and from school, a hundred and eighty days a year, times two safely. And they get fed breakfast and lunch every day, and the buildings are clean every day. And Katie makes sure that all of our non-professional staff are in red uni- red shirts, so that the kids know whom to go to if there's a problem. And teachers that care, counselors, and all the things that I see here in my short time here. So it truly is a people business, and, you know, and that's part of, that's the bulk of what our operation costs are, seventy-eight cents of every dollar. So the stuff that we might talk about, or quibble about, uh, what I call the paper clips or the copy paper, yeah, it's there, we have to have them, but that's twenty-two cents of, of every dollar. The bulk of it really is, is stuff that we don't have control over, it's, it's the salaries, it's the benefits, and and so mu- so much of it is driven by factors that we don't have any control over. When, uh, we're told by Nike, you know, what the increase is going to be next year for the health insurance, that's just what it is, and we have to budget for that. So, I just wanted to take that moment to digress and share with you those couple of thoughts. So, this slide kinda gives you a.
So Phil, we can go back for one, one moment though.
Absolutely.
Cause people are gonna ask, you know, um, even though it's going up by three, by one, when we see the, the percent increase is four, nine, five, it is, it is the things that are out of our control that have pushed that up, which was largely those employee benefits. You know, I just wanted to, and, and it's right there in black and white for everybody, you know, so. Cause the board members are gonna be asked that question, and we, we did keep, we kept things flat, and we compressed on things. But again, it's, it's those, it's those, those, those breathtaking employee benefits that were just handed to us.
And as you, you all have advocated, and you, you believe in, I believe in, Katie believes in, we are a very transparent district. Everything, like as soon as the slideshow is, is presented or whatnot, all this goes on our website. The entire community has access to it, we have nothing to hide. I'm gonna be putting our entire budget, uh, on the website very shortly, and the only thing I redacted were the employee names for confidentiality. But aside from that, every salary, every line, every expenditure is in there, the, the public sees everything we're doing. And if they ever have any questions, they can call and ask me, or Katie, or whatever, but, uh, there's nothing to hide here, everything's very straightforward. This breaks it down, I try to break it down in a couple of different ways to share with you, you know, how the expenses are, where the categories are, what we're doing, um, what we're trying to do with the money. This, I, I just wanted to show you this one page, and again, if people ask you, refer them to us, or refer them to look at the website, and they can access any one of these slides, print them out, take a look at them. You'll see that all the slides I do, particularly with the budget, I go back the last couple of years, just like Jennifer did, I changed that. It's how I always operate, so people can see, this is what we spent fifteen, sixteen. This is what we spent sixteen, seventeen, this is what we're spending this year, this is what's proposed. And we try to show, you know, a gradual steady increase where we have to increase. And you'll also see, we try to hold the line or reduce where we can hold the line. Forty-one million, eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred ninety-six dollars, that's our budget for eighteen, nineteen. Budget to budget, it's a four point nine percent increase. Property tax limit, you'll recall, we're, we're allowed to charge the community four point zero two percent. The board made a decision to drop that down, board approved to three point five one percent. So the projected tax levy that will be asking the community to vote upon and, uh, rendered to the school district is thirty-seven million, five sixty-one, one forty. We could have asked for thirty-seven, seven forty-eight, six forty-six. You brought the tax levy under the limit by a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And you should be commended for that, because you're trying, one of the things that you have demonstrated, and I'm gonna show you another slide which further demonstrates what you've done, we've, we've heard as administrators loud and clear, what can you return to the community? What can you give back to the community? You didn't charge the community the full tax levy you could have, you dropped it down where you could by a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. When we take a look at this slide, and this is the one, and you've seen it before, I wanna explain it again. This shows you from fifteen, sixteen to where we are, how we're going to pay for that budget, that forty million dollar, that forty-one million dollar, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. The state has told us that pretty much guaranteeing we're gonna get one point nine nine seven, one million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars we'll get in state aid next year. We get pilots, payments in lieu of taxes, we have utility lines that run through our properties. And, uh, between cablevision, PSEG, we get money for that, instead of tax money, as, as a resident would pay, they pay us in terms of a pilot. Last year, which is this year, we received a hundred and fifty. I'm figuring next year, we're gonna get somewhere between one fifty and one fifty-eight, but I don't know for sure. So I'm being fiscally conservative, and I put a hundred and fifty in for next year, cause I know we're gonna get at least that, okay? The non-resident tuition, when you think about what Katie has put together as your superintendent and the programs, including, we have students coming in from other districts, coming to our school. That alone is indicative of how wonderful a school district we have, where we have children from other communities paying us tuition to come here. That is amazing. And again, I think you as a board should be applauded. I mean, just look around, look at this library, how beautiful it is, look at your facilities, look at the quality of your teachers, your administrators. You really, really, and truly have a quality, top-notch school. And again, I'm gonna re- that's why I wanted to be here, because you have that. Because of that, we're, we, this is what we have, people that have contractually signed on for us for next year. Based on our tuition rates, we're looking at an income of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars in tuition money coming to the district next year for students coming to our district. I have that in the budget. We're figuring based on what's been pretty consistent, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for shared services, usage of our buildings. That's gonna be pretty consistent. Grants, interest, miscellaneous income. I dropped that down a little bit to be conservative, it's been running around one twenty to one forty. I'm figuring we're gonna at least take in one seventeen, we should take in more, but that's what I put in the budget. Your general fund tax levy, the three point five one percent, so let me just go back. Your thirty-seven, five sixty-one, one forty is now right there. That's the tax levy. Again, putting money back to the community that you, that you have. We have five hundred thousand dollars allocated from the, from the, uh, employee retirement system reserve that we're looking to put into the budget to balance the budget. That was money that's in our reserve. And we're, we have a full four percent of fund balance, which is about one point four million dollars. And we're looking to allocate five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars of that money to give back to the community in appropriated fund balance. And that is how we intend to balance the budget and pay for next year's budget. It's a combination of pilots, SCD money, the tax levy, interest and, and whatnot, and what we have already in our, in our savings accounts that we're looking to give back to the community. You add that up, we're, we're giving back over a million dollars to the community, it's a lot of money. But that's what, that was one of your concerns, we heard you loud and clear, that's how we structured the budget.
Can I ask a question about what you just said? I wanna make sure that we're really clear.
Absolutely.
Giving back a million dollars, can you just define what you mean by that?
Okay.
People might hear that and think the check's in the mail, I'm getting my piece of the million.
No, it's a good point.
I wanna set the expectations.
So.
Thank you.
June thirtieth, when our books were audited by our, our external accounting firm, we had one, uh, we had four percent, we have a full four percent fund balance, that was money that we didn't spend in sixteen, seventeen, that was leftover. We're legally allowed to put four percent of, of our budget into that account. So it's about, I think it's one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So that money went in there.
And they recommend that we have, you know, they, they recommend that we have that four percent.
Absolutely, they absolutely do. And then the, whatever other money there was, the board decided, let's put the rest of it in our various reserves, which I'm gonna share with you, cause now in the tax, the property tax report card. So we've taken all of our, our money and we put it in fund balance, we put it in reserves. So now that we're working on the eighteen, nineteen budget, we wanna maintain the robustness of all of our programs, all the integrity of the things that you're doing here, which make, makes Sag Harbor an excellent school district. So in order to do that, you gave money back to the community by not charging the four point zero two percent tax levy we could have charged them. You agree we're gonna charge three point five one percent, okay? So you're giving them money back there. Then in addition to that, you asked us, can you take a look and see what we can give them in terms of reserve money and fund balance? So we did that, we looked at that, and we're basically giving one-third of our fund balance back to the community. We're keeping about two-thirds, we're giving the community back one-third, uh, into the budget. And then with the reserve, we're taking five hundred thousand dollars out of that reserve and applying that towards the budget. So that when you add those two numbers together, it's a million eighty-one thousand dollars that, uh, we're taking from our fund balance and reserves and building into next year's budget, so that that does not cost. If we didn't do that, what would happen? You would actually have to, if you were to, you would have to do one of two things. You would actually, you would have to cut programs and maybe cut staff to balance your budget. Or you would have to pierce your tax cap to raise the amount of money you wanna charge the community. You would have to do one or the other, or some combination of that. By doing what you did, you stayed under the tax cap, and you gave money that you had in reserve and savings back to the community while at the same time maintaining all of your programs.
But, but I wanna be clear though, cause when you say back to the community, I think people hear that community means they're getting a check. Meaning we applied money that was in reserves to cover the cost of the budget, so we didn't have to increase the, the.
Tax levy.
Yeah, yeah, cause that's different, you know, when you give back to the community, it's like a Star Trek in the mail.
Okay.
Okay, right.
So you're right, but that's how we're doing it.
Right, we're covering it with reserves, some of our, some of the cost for next year.
We're, we're drawing from our savings account and depositing in our checking account.
And we're still staying at the four percent in the reserve, right?
This will drop a, this will drop our four percent down, but now we'll have to see as we close out this year, I'm hoping that we don't spend all the money in our budget, so that we can replenish that for next year.
Okay, so I'm trying to get to your million dollar plus, Phil. So I just added a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars that we could have charged because we remained under the te- we, we did a three point five one instead of a four point oh two.
You're right, Steph.
So I'm sticking in one eighty-seven, five oh six in my calculator.
Right.
Then we're transferring five hundred thousand from the reserve.
That's correct.
So we're transferring from savings into checking, so I'm at six eighty-seven, five oh six.
Yep.
And then we're withdrawing from our fund balance savings account.
That's right.
Five eighty-one.
Probably around twelve fifty.
One eighty-two, ten eighty-one, a million eighty-one thousand. That's what you said, right? One eighty-seven plus five hundred plus five eighty-one, one two six eight.
There you go.
Okay, so then the only question I would have here is that the fund balance transfer is a large increase from last year, minus five eighty-one.
Yep.
Thousand dollars.
That's correct.
But we honestly won't know until we close seventeen, eighteen's books.
What's left over.
What's left over from, we might not have spent thirty-nine, nine oh seven in one debt.
Okay. It's my opinion that we will have money left over, I just don't know how much yet.
Okay. Okay?
I, I have one more question on this slide. With the non-resident tuition, it's a huge increase obviously from this year to next year, we're almost doubling what we're projecting we're gonna get. Is that from the school districts that we have contracts with? Because we had contracts with them this year.
Right, and what we did is we did a very conservative, we only put into that budget, um, I think we talked about this, um, when we, we looked at, remember we looked at revenue early on, and we're looking at revenue again.
Yeah.
We only inputted the students we actually have enrolled here now. We didn't add in the students we think we might get next year, so, like the students that are rising into fifth grade or rising into sixth grade, you know, like that are coming.
And then more come in.
That, that, you know, they're telling us that they, that we're gonna have more students next year. But we're not going on what they've said they think are coming.
Right.
We, we only are putting into that budget students that we now have currently enrolled in our school district. So Sagaponica, Wayne Scott, I've already said, you know, and actually had students toured through here. They're saying, so, we know that that number's gonna be higher, but this is how we set this up when we got those contracts. because we felt like it was really conservative. Because we still have in that number some tuition-paying parents and they can change their mind on a whim. And so I just really felt like that was the smart way to go. And that's why you, that's why you're seeing such a dramatic increase of eighty-one percent. And you'll probably see that again. Um, I just feel like fiscally, it's really, it's a smart, conservative way to go.
That's why I was asking about the seven twenty-four, because it seems like it's not that conservative. Like, we've been really conservative all along. Maybe it's more accurate?
It's very accurate.
So for this year then, because I know the four hundred thousand for this year was the budget, not the actual. How much actual do we think we're gonna take in from that tuition?
That is, that's, that's, that's actually the number we have right now.
So we have, we're gonna earn about four hundred thousand this year in tuition. I thought this was the budget, not the actual.
What, what he put in was what we actually have right now. We didn't, we didn't estimate for next year. We only are putting in what students are currently enrolled or have actually put in. And very few students have actually put in for, like, let's say, pre-K from Sagaponica or pre-K from Wayne Scott. They haven't enrolled yet.
Right.
They, and students going into fifth grade, um, from Sagaponica or Wayne Scott have not enrolled yet. So we, that number only reflects who is currently enrolled in Sag Harbor right now.
We, I'm sorry, which, I'm sorry, which number are you, you talking about the four hundred or the seven twenty-four?
Chris is referring to this year's number of four hundred thousand. Is that a budget number or an actual?
Right, he said it was an actual, but then, then I thought it's other than that.
So four hundred, four hundred thousand was what we were estimating for, for, for last year. So seven hundred, that seven hundred you're looking at is roundabout what we're bringing in this year, is what we're.
Right, okay, that makes more sense, because when I asked you, is the four hundred thousand an actual or a budget, you said it was actual.
So four hundred thousand is what we were.
This is what we're looking at. You guys should've got it covered. But those numbers are accurate. That's how I came up with the seven twenty-four.
So this is, right, this is what we're estimating we'll get next year.
Yeah, Phil, here's what Chris is asking. In the current year we're in, which is going to end in June thirtieth, so the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget,
Yeah.
non-resident tuition on our slide is four hundred thousand dollars.
That's a budget, not an actual.
And Chris is saying, is that the budget number or is that?
It's actually gonna be four oh one, six eight.
So our actual number for this year is four hundred and one thousand. Very close to the budget, by the way. Good for you, because it was budgeted at four, it came in at four oh one, six eight, right?
And that's what we're looking at for next year.
So we're looking at the actual, not the budget to actual, but the actual, almost doubling.
Yeah, those are actual student counts that we know are coming.
Okay, I'm sorry, is that pre-K Stella Maris children as well?
The, the, the kids are, they're just moving over. It's the same number of kids.
But it couldn't, it couldn't be the same number from, from four oh one to seven twenty-four.
And the pre-K?
Well, they're not, they're not all pre-K kids.
No, Katie's saying all she took was a current number.
The pre-K.
She asked a separate question while you were looking at your paper.
No, right, but, but the answer, but earlier, if you said that your calculation was the current kids moving up and that's what you're, that's what you're estimating for next year, it couldn't just be that because it's almost doubling in cost.
Yes, and then I confused it. I'm sorry, because you weren't done with your question.
It's okay.
By asking about the pre.
Pre-K, so then I circled back. I should let that be answered and then I can get, I'm sorry, I'm so confused about this. You know.
Why don't I do this? Why don't I just send, I sent you enrollment numbers, I can send you the enrollment numbers again. When Jennifer and I put in the numbers last year, we did a very conservative, only who we had enrolled. We did no estimations of who we might be getting from the two districts we've written contracts with. Robustly, children from Sagaponica and Wayne Scott decided to come to Sag Harbor, which made the numbers go up. This year, we only went conservatively with those children who are currently enrolled. We're gonna see those numbers robustly go up again. That's why it was flat and then you saw it go up because we had contracts with Sagaponica and Wayne Scott.
Right, what, what had confused me, so I apologize, what confused me was you said that for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, you only took the kids that are currently enrolled and moved them up. But at the same time, I'm hearing our actual for this year. Our budget was four hundred, our actual is only four oh one. So that was confused me.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's right.
If our actual, that was the sheet you put in front of me, right, the actual's four oh one.
Are we, which year are we talking about? This year or?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's right. I think the four hundred, four hundred, I, I don't think that's correct. I, I, let me.
Unless I misread, what you just, what you put in front of me just now said two thousand seventeen, eighteen. It said four oh one and change. And that was, and that was, you said that was the actual number, so that's why, that's why I'm confused.
Phil, I think that might've been the beginning of the year. I don't think that's where.
Let me show you where.
I think that, I think they're.
Oh, I hate when we get into the.
Yeah, where are the weeds?
It's not the weeds. It's a big difference and I'm trying to understand it. That's not the weeds. It's a huge difference. Yeah, and I'm getting.
That was her projection for this year. That, that's from last year's budget for this year. That's where she came up with this, with this year's projection.
But that answers my question. It makes sense.
And that's the number of students we have currently enrolled.
That's right.
Right.
This is what we had currently enrolled last year. This is how many we had currently enrolled last year for this, for, for current year budget. This is who we have currently enrolled right now to create next year's budget. So, so show this to Chris.
That, that makes total sense.
He's gonna, he's gonna show you who we have currently enrolled this year.
What you've just said makes sense. He showed me a different sheet and said that was actual and that's why I couldn't understand that.
Now, look at that sheet. That's who we have currently enrolled.
That makes total sense. That, that answers my question. Thank you. Okay?
I still think there'll be a tremendous influx of preschool kids when they see how nice Stella Maris is. That's where I was going. I think they're gonna be banging down the door.
What I think is gonna be the problem is the daycare, I think, is gonna be very popular.
It's, it's gonna be, I think we're gonna see the biggest influx a year later when we go to full day, right?
We're not going to full day.
I don't mean, hold on, I don't mean full day of pre-K. But I was called by a parent, so this could be incorrect, who, who said that they weren't gonna enroll their kids next spring because they couldn't get the childcare after the pre-K. But it was gonna start the following fall. And so that's when she and her friends are thinking about having their kids come in.
When we have the wraparound daycare?
That's what I'm talking about.
When the daycare starts at seven o'clock in the morning and goes to five o'clock at night?
God, I'm gonna have three more kids.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to have a lot of reasons.
Just like a drop 'em in there.
I've still got a few more slides to go through.
Okay.
All right? This, you've seen many times, this is how we came up with the three point, this is exact, it's three point five zero six two, but as we all know, it's the three point five one percent. Tax levy, this was the complicated calculation that we came up with our number of thirty-seven, five, sixty-one, one forty. This, you've seen this slide before. I just wanted to point out, by that three point five one percent increase for next year in the town of East Hampton, which is this chart, and Southampton, which is this chart, based on a million-dollar home, uh, we're looking at, this is the three point five oh, this is the three point five, uh, three point oh eight. We're looking at an increase of a hundred and eighty-seven dollars in East Hampton, a hundred and forty-seven dollars in Southampton. Comes to fifteen dollars and change here, twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents here. With the rebates, I checked with the town, these are the numbers for, uh, coming up for eighteen, nineteen. It's all based on gross incomes, which the chart is here, and the percentage that they allocate. But we're looking at, uh, for basic star, for East Hampton, two ninety-eight, for Southampton, two sixty-four. Enhanced is six thirty-five and five seventy-four. This is an additional proposition that's going to be on the ballot. This was, uh, Katie could probably speak a lot more about it, but we had numerous requests from families here in the district asking if we could reduce the, uh, the pickup radius from one mile to a half mile. And as you know, we had a study done, we looked at it. And we can do this with our existing drivers, buses and routes. And, and there would not be an increase of cost to the district if, if this were to happen.
Don't we have to say anticipated? No additional cost? I mean, do we know that for certain that it's not gonna cost anything? What if lots more people sign up?
I think that's a good idea. Well, this are, this was structured by our attorneys, so this language is, but, um, transportation, um, uh, specialist had worked with, with Maude. And she even, Maude felt very firmly, um, working with the committee and with the transportation specialist that very few parents are gonna take advantage of it, even if it was a mile.
No, I get it. I mean, we did a study and it's, I understand why they said that they think there's not gonna be an increase and that's great and I have no reason to doubt it. It just seems to me, unless we know that, certainly.
I think that's why, because when, when they did it at the, at, at one mile, there, there was an increase. And without having the second portion of that study done to test the efficiency of the routes, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't want, I wanted to maintain it flat until we had the pay per trip.
And we, then we can watch this and monitor it.
So this is the one proposition that's gonna be on the ballot next month and, um.
There was a question that I got from a community member about this that I, I said I would raise about the cost, which I hadn't thought of and we discussed it, so I apologize. But if, if we're having the same number of buses and drivers, same route, same number of routes.
Right.
But the routes are gonna be a little bit longer, right? There's gonna be a couple stops added to at least a couple of them, right? Does that impact our ability to have a turnaround? Because we moved the start time, we're already pretty tight between the two, right? Does this impact that at all? Because they said, well, if it's gonna take longer and you're already pretty tight on your time, won't you have to have other buses to make sure you can get to both?
Maude said, one of the easy fixes for, um, what our head of buses said, um, and she confirms with the transportation specialist who I've talked to since then, is one of the options she has is because this is so close, is when they go through the bus loop as they're waiting, the very first bus to leave the bus group can go do this half-mile loop because it's so close to school. So the very first bus to arrive can drop the children off, leave, do that half-mile loop, so close to school, pick the kids up. And before the buses are done departing, can be the first, last bus in.
Regardless of where it is, whether it's a half-mile and it's in the village or a half-mile it's on one fourteen, wherever the half-mile is.
Because it's, it's a half, it's a half mile.
Right.
It's so, it's so close to school.
Right.
It's a congested period, so there might be a little play on this one.
But not a lot. It wouldn't impact the, I, I just, I said, look, the study says it won't impact it, but I just wanted to.
And some of those buses, when they're pulling in, they, the children wait to get, to get, um, to get let out. So the first, it could be the first two buses let, let out, because they wanna let the children out safely. So some of them are sitting in that bus loop for a while. So the first two buses depart the children, then go, one goes this way at one fourteen, one goes this way. Because a half mile's pretty, and they're gonna be bus stops. This isn't door-to-door transport. This is bus stops. So they do the bus stops in a half mile, do their pickups and come back. And we're also not expecting a real heavy level of ridership. We're expecting it really just for elementary. We're not expecting a lot of the middle school, high schoolers to go, ooh, yeah. But we do have to guarantee that ridership, you know? Like, once we set those routes, we gotta do those routes.
So it will be throughout the district, not just in one fourteen?
It's gonna be the half mile.
Right.
It's a half mile.
So how do we, this is a personal question, Amy. How do we know if we come within the half-mile range?
You're gonna be contacted. Take a tape measure. And I believe the rule is that you walk from the flagpole.
We, no, stop. We have, we have, no, we have, we have a, we have a, a really, really good, it's called Trans Finder. And it's, it's this amazing piece of electronic and it's.
Like, is there a website I can go to where I click my?
No, 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 they contact you. They'll contact you. And it, it's really something. It pulls up, it, you see the map of Sag Harbor, you see every single street and images come up with the families and you actually see how many children are in each household. And they're color-coded for, are they middle school or high school? And we, we transfer them over in the summer so you can actually watch your family colors change.
So I'll get a letter from them?
Yeah, yeah, so they'll contact you. And so it's really cool.
I'm telling you, the time, the place.
And so you can protect, and so when we do all this, and then you can actually, when you, you know, go over the families, it'll say what those families generally do, so, and that's how you spit out all that stuff. And so like, when we have to do snow, you know, winter stops and everything, we actually can migrate that information right into our, um, uh, uh, bullet systems home to families to let them know what we're doing as far as, um, you know, there's gonna be winter bus stops, that kind of thing. Really, really.
Can that, that system see through the windows like?
It's kinda creepy, I gotta tell you.
Sounds creepy. So how can that same system find the people that don't live here? That, I mean, it should be able to do that, right?
There's an app for that.
There's an app for that.
Okay, I'm gonna go to that slide on that note. And I'm actually gonna, this is the one slide I have in the presentation I'm going to turn over to Katie to talk about.
Okay, so in the general, um, uh, things that we talked about, you know, and this is something the board has asked for, could we, could we bullet this? Um, and, um, Phil and I had a robust meeting with Noyak. Civic council's good enough to invite the public in. And so we were there from seven thirty until ten thirty last night, presenting all of the budget and every question they could possibly have. And so it was really great to vet it, but this is what we ended with, was the high, proposed highlights, which is from our pre-K through twelfth grade is that we're maintaining all our current, um, programming. And a, a really great thing that one of our longtime Sag Harbor, born and raised, go back three hundred years, took me aside and said, you know, my daughter lives up island and pays over twenty thousand dollars in taxes. And she said, and people, she said, I, I had to move because some, because the school's so good. She said, I live now at Noyak. She said, am I, I sold my Sag Harbor home because the school's so good. And she said, and I still, you know, I pay less than eight thousand dollars in all my taxes because the school is so good. And people wanna move here because the school's so good. And so one of the things we need to protect is all our current programs will be maintained. And that will have professional development, so all our teachers and our staff will ensure the excellent instruction and support all of our fragile learners across the board. That will support further development of learning opportunities, especially in one of the fastest-growing fields because this is where the world is going with science, technology, engineering, the arts, which, the arts bring innovation. So never forget how important the arts are for making innovators of our scientists, our technology, our engineers and our mathematicians. The elimination, or the elimination of the middle school assistant principal position, in so creating a middle school principal position. We don't have a number on that because that has to be negotiated. But that is such an important piece to have because as all the business offices, which is many rooms in what is considered the middle school wing, move to Stella Maris, as the superintendent's offices and my cabinet, um, conference room moves to Stella Maris, as the two, um, pre-K classrooms move to Stella Maris and their beautiful play area move to Stella Maris, all that then needs to be created into a, a authentic middle school wing. And we've already had, um, the wellness group already start talking about what we're going to do with that, um, pre-K play area and getting in touch with Cornell Cooperative Extension to make that a science area and a learning area, um, so that we can have, um, wind power and solar power and learning about how we raise crops. So that's, you know, has to be transformed. And all those classrooms have to be refitted to make that again for sixth and seventh graders and some of our eighth-grade classrooms. So that's gonna take, um, true leadership, um, in that area. Then district-wide initiatives are upgrade outdated network operations because, again, we worry about safety and security. We also worry about our changing weather conditions so that they, um, we have the best infrastructure systems in that upgraded network operations. And explore, um, limitations to the strength of our security and, um, safety. So that we need to make sure that we are, not only have the, the strongest safety and security, but we also make sure that we have the softest district to maintain safety and security. That means we have the best wellness programs, that we have the best, um, that we're taking care of any, we know and we take care of all of our children, um, from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, that we match them up to, that they feel Velcro'd to school. But if they are needing help, that we're there rapidly to support them in, um, in every possible way when it comes to, um, mental wellness and, uh, thoughtfulness in their trajectory in life.
Can I ask a question about this? First of all, I wanna thank you because I find this really helpful. So I really appreciate it and I think that it's, it'll be easy for people to kind of look at this and say, can I get some of the, the big rocks that they're working on?
Correct.
Do it for you. Just a point of clarification on the middle school principal. Is the increase in that in the budget at all or no?
No.
So it hasn't been built in, but you'll find the money somewhere else?
If, if, that will, that's why we have a, um, the, a general, um, reserve fund is because that, when things come along.
You have to be able to respond. You have to be able to respond.
Yeah, and that, that'll have to be negotiated.
I know, that makes total sense. And then, secondly, when we first talked about this, we kind of committed that, be, before we voted on this, we were gonna have a public discussion, it would be on the agenda, the public could participate. But we've had such kind of a, a condensed schedule, it's kind of been hard to do that. So, um, we ha-, I would assume that we would have that conversation after the budget passes, where the public could engage before we would actually approve this position. So this is kind of a placeholder in case it's done, not a guarantee that it will be done, is that correct?
This is, we, what, this, we call this the superintendent's budget. You know, really, before you guys adopted, it's the superintendent's budget. So the superintendent takes all of the goals, the initiatives, everything that's coming out and looking, forecasting forward. And then you approve this budget and move forward. But all of these things are really just designs. This is a, is a, it's a framework for us to move forward. You know, it's, it's your framework and your pieces. So not, this is not a, you, you build your goals at the start of every school year, but this is the framework for, for which you work from. So it's, it's not a, it's not a mandate, it's just a framework.
Well, you know, I understand it, but, but usually when you have stuff on the list that's in, that is part of a proposed budget, it means that when you vote on it, you're saying, this is what we plan on doing. Here, it's, uh, it's listed under proposed budget, but actually, there's nothing in our budget that's associated with this.
No, it's, yeah, and it looks like a highlight to me.
Right, but, but it's not, it actually is not even in the proposed budget, correct?
Well, and we haven't created the position, we haven't done any of those steps.
Right, but, but beyond that, what I'm hearing is that there's actually, in the budget itself, there's nothing about this. In this budget that we're approving, isn't anything that pays for the difference between an assistant principal and a principal.
Except the reserves, yeah.
With the reserves, with the reserves, right, the reserves can be done, done for anything. And so that it, you know, if we pass this, it doesn't mean that we are necessarily endorsing that this get done. We haven't had a public discussion.
Katie's giving you a pro.
I just wanna make sure people know what to be transparent, and that they don't question that. We are gonna be transparent and have a public conversation.
These are, these are Katie's highlights, and, and like she said, up until the point of adoption, it's, it's the superintendent's budget. So she, and, and again, being, um, transparent, which we hear a lot of clear, she's just trying to convey to you, this is her ideas, this is what, highlights of what she wants you to look at as a.
But even if they vote on this, it doesn't mean that this is gonna be a position we just created, that's all.
There's no money allocated in the budget for it.
But, but, Chris, this is not anywhere near voting polls, this is just a discussion.
No, but if people look at the budget, and they look at, if they look at the summary sheet, they're gonna think it's part of it.
We voted to agree to this.
And then if they vote yes to this, they're voting on this, and that we've endorsed this position.
Yeah, this is just a PowerPoint.
So just try to create transparency on that, that's all.
But, um, but again, if you take your recommendations from your superintendent, so your superintendent's making recommendations that, um, and this is transparency, that this, for the proposed budget, you know, moving forward, that would be a recommendation.
Right, but we started that public discussion, we haven't had it yet.
But, you know, I'm gonna use, be like my mother, but God forbid, if you didn't bring this up, and then we moved into next year, they'd say, weren't you thinking about having this as part of the budget?
Right.
You know, we were. Yeah, it was.
We may do this, we may not do this, but this is something that might be coming up next year to do.
Because if you didn't think about it, and you moved all those folks out of the middle school, and then all of a sudden you have that middle school wing and you have offices, really nice superintendent's office, it's gonna be kinda empty. People say, hey, didn't you ever think of that? And I said, yes, I did think of that, and I did talk to the board about that. So I presented it, I talked to the board about it, and it's.
We're gonna have a public conversation, I just wanted to reinforce that.
There you go.
There you go.
All right. We're almost done.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Did you have a question?
I did have a question.
Yeah.
I guess it was kind of separate. Um, I guess at one point, I can't remember who brought it up, or when we brought it up, but we were talking about the 2019 operating cost for Stellamaris, and where we're.
Through, um, it's really interesting, cause I, I went back to Jennifer, um, about that, and she said, there is a singular slide, and so I sat down with Marcus and, and with Phil and said, here's the slide, here's everything Jennifer has, and I'm gonna use another, I'm gonna stop being so folksy. Um, it's like Ragout, it's in there, so it's in there. There, and I, I had, um, made sure that Phil brought that singular side of, the projections have not changed from when Jennifer created those projections. And he does have that slide for you tonight, right? He did have that slide for you tonight, right?
Uh.
That's great.
I don't know if I brought it.
Cause we, all right, we did have that.
We have one.
We have a slide, and it's, I'm not gonna say it's minimal cost, but the costs for, there was one, um.
There were, really were no increases from our.
Yeah, other, other than the custodian that would be starting, and that's only when the building opens. So it's half a custodian, which we put into the budget, um, and.
So half a custodian?
It's a very short person.
How visual.
Half a year of a custodian.
You know, I think, I, I.
I do think that, though.
I do think, but point mobile. When we talked, when we talked about security, though, we did talk about a security person there. Um, I think this, I, I, now I'm remembering, you're right, cause it came up during the presentation where, cause it was a security update around the budget. And that's, and when there was a reference to Stellamaris, that's when the request came in. So, um, but, but, um, so on Jennifer, the projections with Jennifer, did it have a security cost? Security person?
Well, I think we added security.
Yes.
Because we were, we were upping the man hours and the people.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, we, we added security.
But I think the question was about accounting for the cost specific to the Stellamaris addition, so that's what it was.
So we upped security overall.
Right.
Right. Uh, for the whole dis-, every, Stellamaris is now part of our district, it falls under our, um.
Snow removals.
Yeah, and, and, so, and it, and like, our repair and reserve, it's now, it falls under that as well. So it's, it's, it's like, you know, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's, it's in, it's.
Oh, yeah, no, I think the reference was that when we proposed the bond, and the presentations all said, this is gonna be the operating cost.
And we had that slide.
So it sounds like it hasn't changed from what you had presented to the public, which is correct.
And, and we, and, and when Marcus did his, um, his piece of the budget, we, and we heard you loud and clear, we, we entered that into it, but it was like, when I say it was a lift, it would, it didn't even move the needle, cause it's such a small footprint. It's, it's a really small building.
Katie, I have the slide, but it's on another PowerPoint, it was, it's on the PowerPoint we had for last night.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, when is this building opening again, I forgot?
January.
January.
It's in the middle of the year.
And we're only putting the pre-K and the administrators. Um, we're not gonna move the daycare in until, until the summer, until July 1. Sort of like you start a restaurant, I wanna do a soft start, um, because I think it's, it's, it's smart, um, to do that. So we'll move the pre-K in, make sure that's up, because we're gonna have all the security, there's a lot of security around that.
Right.
So we get the security up, get that moving, get all of the administrators in, and then start the daycare when the pre-K's not there, so that that can get started and get that fully functioning. And then the pre-K can come back in and get that feel.
So January 2019?
In the middle of this budget year.
Okay.
If, you know, if, uh, if everything goes well, you know, so, you know, that's what they're, that's still their protection.
So I wanna gift certificate to the cafeteria and an invitation to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, okay. Go ahead.
Your list is getting longer.
I'm gonna buy you lunch. If you wanna come down, I'll buy you lunch whenever you come down, all right? This is a little hard to see on the projector, but everyone's got a copy of it in their binder. One of the things you'll be voting on tonight, uh, this is called the property tax report card, and I prepared it, it's, uh, due to State Department 24 hours after, uh, within 24 hours of the time you vote on this. This is a compilation of everything you've seen in the slides, I'm gonna just walk you through. In the, uh, the first line, it shows the tax levy, uh, oh, I'm sorry, the, uh, the total budget amount for 1718, where we're in now, which is the 39907. It shows the proposed budget for 1819, 1941, 88896. Then it shows the two respective tax levies for 1718 of 36288769 and 37561140. Then it drops down where you add the columns together, if there are any other items, which we do not have. So in column E, those numbers replicate again. Column F shows the amount of money we were allowed to exclude from the tax levy limit based on our debt. That gives us a permissible, permissible exclusion number, which in column A is the 34405914, column B, the 35936161. Uh, the next number, uh, excludes the levy for supportive library debt, which we don't have. And when you add those columns together, it's 34274195 and 35748655. The difference in each respective column is the 131719 in column A and the 187506 in column B. So what, that, and then the last number shows your enrollment. So what those, it's kind of a convoluted way of saying the same thing that we've been saying. What the state wants to know is very simply this. They wanna know, what is your budget this year? What is your proposed budget for next year? They wanna know, what is your tax levy this year? What are you proposing for a tax levy next year? Then they wanna know, what was the total amount of money you could've levied this year? What is the total amount of money you could've levied next year? What is the delta or the difference between them? And that's the next number, the 131719 and the 187. And then finally, they wanna know what your student count is. That's what the state wants to know on the tax report card.
And does the state ever ask Phil why the, a district would choose to leave money on the table and not levy to the highest amount allowed by law? Do we, do we, are we penalized?
You're not penal, you're not penalized, but do understand, with the decision that the board made, uh, by leaving money on the table, as you mentioned.
Right.
So that gives you a lower starting point in 2018, 19.
Correct.
When we're building the 2019, 2019 budget.
Right.
Cause you could've had more.
Right.
But you chose not to give back to the community.
Got it.
So, but you made a cognizant decision doing that.
But we're not giving back, we're just taxing them less.
Correct.
Right, but giving back means you're getting something back, or not. We're just talk, not charging them as much as we wish to.
Yeah, but, but, well, that's why I, I guess, leaving money on the table. In other words, we could've charged up to.
Correct.
Right.
The percentage allowed by law, and we chose to, not to.
But, do, do, some districts go up to that line, and some districts decide they don't wanna tax these taxes.
Many districts go right to the max because they need to. And then what you'll hear, you'll, so some districts, thankfully, not us, some districts that have more expenses and they have revenue coming in, they have no choice, that, if they cut, and they cut very deeply, um, and I'm not gonna mention any, but you know of, just hearing on the news, certain districts close to us that do that. And then, when they still don't have enough, they have to pierce the tax cap, and then they have to have the 60% majority to do that.
I mean, the majority of our homes are owned by second homeowners, so a very small percentage of our taxpayers actually send kids to our district, which is why our taxes are so low, and why we can spend so much per student, we still have no taxes, we're very lucky. Thank you, second homeowner.
Okay, so I just wanna go on record to tell you that my high school closed, did I tell you that?
No.
Because everybody was failing and they couldn't graduate, so they, that's why I moved to Seton Hall. They do a high school that closed, go ahead, thanks, that's one time.
The second page to the tax report card is brand new, they added it this year. The state wants to know how much money you guys have stashed away.
Ooh. My god, first you're seeing how many kids you got in the house, then you're peering through the windows, and now they wanna know our bank account balance.
That's what this is.
Jesus.
So you will see, we had to list every single reserve and what it's for, and how much money we have in, in there as of March 31st, and what we think we'll have in there as an estimate by June 30th. And if we intend to use any of it, you drop all the way down to the, uh, the retirement reserve. That's the $500,000 that we're allocating, uh, into the budget for next year that I showed you on that previous slide. If you wanna go back real quick. Right here. There's your $500,000. And then I'll go fast forward really quick. And that's where it's coming out. So I have to reflect that to the state. And everything else is there, um, so.
So, wait, this isn't a total, this is, you don't have a running total, yeah?
This is the running, uh, for all the accounts?
Yeah.
No, they didn't ask that.
They just wanna know how many, we do this in our free time.
Yeah.
This is all the state reporting.
But I have another slide that I've, I presented at the March 26 meeting. If you take a look, you'll see, it's got a total of what all your accounts are.
We, we also just had this, so when you slides back, it's this year.
I'm sorry, that was the day of the 6th, so I apologize. But let me ask you a question.
It's, just turn, yeah, just turn back, yes.
I'm going.
Okay.
But, um, we, do we have, uh, the maximum allowed by law in those reserves?
4%?
No?
In the, uh, fund balance of 4% currently, you do. You do have that.
We did dip under it, because we're, we're moving money out of it to cover the bill.
The, the only one where there's a mandate for that is what's called your capital reserve. I have to look at how, I would actually have to look at how that resolution was written to see how much money you're allowed to have in that. The other reserves are, are based on your reserve plan, and that is, you're basically justifying why you have the money you have in each of those accounts. And as long as you have a reserve, a written reserve plan that explains that, because the state does, they, they have no mandate, or they have no formula that says how much money's gotta go into each one of those accounts. So, for example, you have $500,000 in workers' comp.
Right.
So if the controller's office were to come out and audit us and say, Phil, how come you've got $500,000 in? Well, I'm gonna refer back to the reserve plan. But I'm also gonna say, from a logical standpoint, we have about 275 employees here. We had a catastrophic loss, we self-insure, that we have less than $2,000 per employee allocated for a loss. The average loss in this district, when we have one, is about $8,300. So, although we haven't had many losses, but we have to account for that, because we self-insure. Uh, same with, uh, unemployment, we've got $100,000 in unemployment. If we had to lay somebody off or there were an issue and whatnot, there's a real good chance the state will come to us and say, you've gotta pay that person unemployment. That's $405 for 26 weeks, and they could ask for another 26-week extension. But we have to have the money put aside for that. So, so, and I went, went through this with my last district, they went through an audit, and I had to explain to them, I had the written plan, but I also had to explain why I had the money I had in those reserves. So you've got good reserves, uh, and we can justify what's in those reserves. And that slide from March 26, that gives you the total. It's like, well, you'll see when you add all. So this is what you're gonna be voting on tonight.
Is there, is there a chance that we could vote on it Monday, so we have a chance to really review what we're going on? Because you answered a lot of questions, but I haven't looked at most of the stuff that was sent to us today, cause I only saw it to- tonight.
The answer is yes, but I have to tell you, Ben, it has to be, because the deadline for submission to the state is the 24th.
But we also are under, um, we have to know, we have to get the budget notice done, um, that has to go to every taxpayer. Um, and that has to be to the printers. That's why, um.
We're gonna be very pressed to, to pull everything together, get it now.
That has to be to the, to the printers on the 24th?
Yes.
I mean, that has to be, that, that, it, at, at the printer.
Has to be done and at the printer.
It has to be on the, at the printers on the 24th, so that we reach our legal obligation.
I, I can assure you that those numbers on that, in that, um, tax report card, they're absolutely accurate.
And here's our.
Oh, I don't doubt, I don't doubt that.
Here's our only other.
Uh, my question isn't, cause I, cause I doubt that at all, so please don't take it that way.
Oh, yeah.
It's more just that, you know, we're supposed to kind of go through it and then vote. So I just, if we, if we could have the time, that's why I was just requesting it, cause there was, I had some other questions, and I feel like I might have more, but I haven't looked at it, so, but I, I, you know, I'm not looking, I'm not looking to rev the process, I'm simply asking a process question.
And here's the, um, the other thing is, um, and I, our Sag Harbor post office knows, I love them, I love them. But they're a rural route.
Yeah.
They're a rural route, uh, post office. Not everybody picks up at, from their, um, um, from their mailboxes. And so when you put somebody in, in somebody's, you know, post off, or mailbox, they might go two or three days and not look in their mailbox.
Yeah.
Um, so that's tough, you know, so it's, having grown up in a rural area, it's very different than the suburbs.
And this has to go to every taxpayer.
It has to go to every taxpayer.
And a lot of the, we have taxpayers that live in California, that live in Michigan, that live in Boston, right? It's not that they, because it's a second home, so we have to afford for that time.
And that's, and that's our legal obligation, and so.
Okay, so you're telling me is that it cuts it too close, so we really need to do it tonight? Okay, I just wanted to ask.
And, but we will, we will go back through the presentation again, you know? And again, the budget is really a framework, um, that we, that we go by. And we, and we did, in the last two years, we also did readjust all, if you'll look, if, you know, as you go deep, if, you know, as you go deep, and part of it, maybe what you're struggling with is, we did realign all the budget codes to go along with New York State. So if you'll notice, it's very tidy now. Everything is together. It used to be, even though he's done it by function, it's very cleanly, because Jennifer went back through last year and realigned all our budget codes and keeping with the controller. So that everything's very tight, which makes it, you know, a nice type of budget. But again, it is a framework, you know, so.
And I think, just to piggyback off that point, one of the things that makes me feel comfortable is knowing that this is a budget, it's not a bill. Right? So it's not like if, if we approve this, that that means that's what we're going to spend on all these things, and that money has to go to those things. It's no, it's a plan. We're adopting a plan, it's not, it's not saying, "This is, this is the money we're going to spend on all of these things." It's just like, no, this is how we plan on spending our money. And if something happens, we're going to make changes and things are going to happen. But it's not saying.
Nisbus and not set the stone.
Yeah, just like, just like when you set your budget at your household for the year. By the time the ninth month rolls around, chances are there's been a few changes.
Yeah.
You know, and for us, it's our very best estimate as to what we think next year's. I mean, we're figuring on spending a year and a half on that.
Well, and quite frankly, if there's things in there that we have questions about, or da-da-da-da-da, like, we don't have to spend the money. Like, it's just earmarked.
And services might change, like in most cases, we might have to add something, we might delete something.
Right.
You know, there's always change. It might not be 2%, it might be a 4.5% increase.
Right, right, it's just a plan.
It's like the curb that jumped off the sidewalk and hit the tire of my car. Did you ever know that a curb could jump off the sidewalk? I think it's called the 17-year-old ran the tire over the curb and it cost me $912. There you go.
There you go. Got to come from somewhere.
Got to come from somewhere.
He's pulling the budget, that's where.
In my house, growing up, I had a rake fall off the wall and scratch my dad's car.
No kidding?
A rake. It was falling from the wall and scratched the car. It wasn't me driving.
So the budget gets the butts. All right, Phil, what else do you need to tell us?
So this is basically, here's your budget workshop calendar. So we have another meeting Monday at 6 o'clock here. We're going to review the entire budget again. And I'm going to give you a different but similar PowerPoint. So we're going to see a lot of the same things and other new things. We've got the hearing on May the 7th, which means we're going to go through the budget again with everyone. So the whole community is aware of it, and we're going to make sure we're reflective and they know what we're doing.
Can I just request that we do a hold-up Stella Maris slide? Yeah, we'll have that on Monday as well.
Yep, I actually have it, it's on our PowerPoint.
Put that actual cost that are in the budget next to it. Because that was just, obviously, it was just a.
Yeah, and we can even highlight it, you know, along.
I think, I think what you have from the original, but actually have, what you actually have in the budget now for those things is just, it would really create clarity, I think.
And then May 15th is the annual meeting of the budget vote, the election. So I've highlighted here in the gym, 7 to 9. And then the full budget calendar, just a recap of that. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time, and.
That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kendra.
Great, thanks.
You're very welcome.
I have a question. I want to be clear on the whole Stella Maris thing because I keep hearing different things. And I thought I'd heard a request, and if that is a request and it requires labor, I want to make sure I get the will of the board. My understanding, and this is where I need you to correct me if I'm wrong, is that right now we have two buildings, and we're going to have three. And that when we're contracting for security, or custodial, or electrical, or gas, or any of those things, currently in our budget, we don't have a breakout for, these are the custodians at the middle school, these are custodians at the elementary school, these are the, these are the security, because it's, it's one facility that where custodians may be in one building or another, security may, is that true?
That's right, that's right.
So, hey, let me finish my.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if, if we're asking, I mean, I know that when Jennifer did the plan, this is the cost, like, she planned for an increase, I can't remember what the number was, forgive me.
We have, but we have a beautiful sheet. It's great, we have.
But, but that in my mind is different than, I won't, on the utilities, what utilities are going to Stella Maris? And on the security, what security is going to Stella Maris? And on the custodian, what's custodian, you know what I mean? Because that level of breakout doesn't currently exist.
No, it does not.
Okay, so we're, that's not what's being requested, right? You're just asking for the sheet from the, from the budget when we pass Stella Maris. I just want to make sure we're clear.
I was asking for whatever sheet you referenced to.
Right, Jennifer, right.
And when originally, when the, when it originally came up, because there had been a reference in one of the presentations about a cost for Stella Maris.
Phil, we can do it on Monday. Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I want to stop.
When there had originally been a discussion at one of the early budget sessions, and there was a reference to a cost that was for Stella Maris that, firstly, I don't remember whether I had been on that original presentation or not, but said, "Well, hey, it'd be good to be transparent and let people know how much the additional cost for operations will go off." Because I know it for bond. And then a few of the board members said, "Good idea, good idea." I think that's, that's what I had referenced tonight, piggybacking on January. Maybe she was asking for something different. And it was in response to when we pitched the idea in public, and were asked how much more this will cost, there was the discussion about, it will cost X to build it, and that's what the bond covers.
Right.
And then the question was, well, how much more is it going to add to our operational budget? And that wasn't about, and so, and the response, I believe, I haven't watched the tape in a long time, but I believe the response, and when we sat through, like, this came up three or four times, was there's going to be, I don't know if there was a nurse, a security guard.
Insurance.
Insurance, there was going to be, you've got heat, you've got electric, blah, blah, blah. And there was kind of a general estimate of what that operational addition would be. That is, so there was an estimate that included those buckets so that, because that's in fact, because that, people wanted to know, it's not just the bond, but how much we have to spend every year to keep that building going is going to add additional cost. So it was in response to that, to answer that question.
Right, I just want to make sure that the request is clear that when we get the slide that we're thinking of, that that's what you had in mind.
That, and, and when that, and when that request came up, I contacted Jennifer, and I talked to Phil and Marcus at the same time because she's still, and she still has all those numbers right there.
Probably she remembers all of them.
She has all, and she literally said,
It's remarkable.
It's $4,000 from Nicer, which is our insurance carrier.
Yeah.
And it's $4,500, blah, blah, blah. She goes, "No, wait, I have it right here on my phone, I'll email it to you." I was like, oh my gosh. And so she sat in the meeting with Marcus and Phil and I, and she went through all the numbers with us. And she said, "Yeah, that's, the estimate you've made for your insur, for the insurance provider more than incorporates, so the, how much our insurance is going up." She said, "You don't even have to show it in the budget because it's already, it's already in there." Because it's only going up, it's only $4,000 to insure Stella Maris because it's a small footprint. And even though it's daycare. So then she went through fuel, oil, and what we'd estimated for next year, it's already in there. So we went through electric, because it's a small footprint. For our estimates, it was already in there. The only thing was the, that we had, if the case started in January, a custodian, so we would have to have one more custodian to our fleet of custodians. It would be another custo, full-time custodian. Because it isn't like that custodian's going to be right there at Stella Maris. We're going to add a custodian to the fleet of custodians that manage all our buildings, you know?
So are you, are you asking for a breakout?
No, she, but she has, she has one sheet done.
No, I understand. Just bring what you have on Monday. Am I asking you to do anything else on Monday? Just bring what you have.
I just wanted to be clear that your expectation.
My expectation, based on the earlier conversation, was that we were going to now circle back to the public because we told them, you know, this is how much we spend now. Adding this building, it's paid for by the bond, but operationally, it's not going to add this much more expense.
Okay, that number.
And so it was that, and the big, the big buckets on that. Because we had, when we pitched it, we said, "It's going to be this." It's good to reaffirm that now that we're actually doing a budget that incorporates it. That's it, just, just to be as transparent as possible about the new addition.
Okay, so I misunderstood what I thought you were requesting. Perfect, excellent. Are we done with the budget from the workshop? I'd like to take a break. Everybody okay with taking a break?
Okay, um, would you mind turning that camera off?
Bathroom break, we'll come back in like five.
By the way, I, I'm checking this because my daughter is on the road and she needs help with the interview she's having tomorrow. So if I'm looking for a text, it's only because I want to make sure I understand it.
You guys all have in front of you a ballot sheet. If you wouldn't mind, the meeting.
Can I actually make it back? In previous years.
Blinking light, yeah, all right, we're on. So Victoria informed me that there's a process for the.
Can I interrupt you?
Please.
Do you want to do the pledge?
Oh, yes, thank you. The pledge. Thank you, Victoria.
You're welcome.
Hi.
What did you just do to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens. Wherever it is injustice for all.
Thank you.
I still want to sing.
You can.
It's your ballpark history.
There you go.
Yes, Yankees and Mets.
So the, well, let's do this. Since we're now in this. Let's do public input one. Because there is public here, and I don't know if that public input would like to make input.
I'll wish you luck, thank you.
Okay, all right. So we only have a couple of items on the agenda, but one of the items was business item number five. And I was mistaken, before we went to break, I thought I had to like collect and then we would vote on what we all agreed on. But then Victoria corrected me and said that we vote on this in public. And then Chris made the suggestion that we go into an exec session and talk about, you know, our thoughts about the candidates, which I was fine with. But then I thought, for a sec, wait a minute, is that one of the reasons why we can go into exec? So I think we should just, it's, it's called the board. So Victoria, would you mind reading just that clause? There's eight reasons why we can go into exec, and one of them is the, do you want to read that piece?
You want me to read all of them?
No, just the one.
Appointment?
Which one was it?
The medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
So.
It's appointment.
But it, but it's an appoint, I'm sorry, does that mean within your own school district?
Well, and that's why we looked it up, because I thought it was the appointment of an employee.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say employee, so it's kind of up to us.
Isn't this an election?
It is.
So that's different from an appointment.
But don't we have to figure out who we're going to elect?
No, I mean, we vote, and then lots of other folks vote, and then there's a winner, right? Or there's five winners. I don't think this is, like, it'd be one thing if we as a board were deciding who was going to be on it. That would be an appointment. But I think we as a board are just participating in an election.
You as a board come up with five candidates together, so it's not an individual.
But then that person, those five people are not on.
Right, you have one vote.
Yeah, I don't think this is an appointment.
Well, we are deciding who that we want appointed to positions. And we are talking about personnel. It doesn't say it has to be personnel in your district. So that's why I asked. I know in, in previous years, it has been discussed. Doesn't mean that we should, but it has been discussed because generally, I think the way it's been described before to us is that we don't discuss personnel, individual personnel in public. And so that's the, part of the spirit of the law is to protect individuals from being discussed publicly.
Other discussion on the floor? Were you done? I'm sorry, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
Other discussion?
I can go either way with it because it doesn't say employee, and it says appointment, which I agree, this, this is an election. But also, aren't they our supervisors?
They're our board.
Right. So I could see that being more internal because we're going to be discussing specific people.
Can I just, I mean, does people know these people? And you're talking about individual.
I don't know any of them, all I know is the letters.
I think the point, yeah, the point of discussing, of not discussing things like someone, you don't want to say, "Well, Jennings is dishonest," or "Hunt is this," or, you know, but no one knows. What was the, was there, just so I understand, was the point to?
There was information in here about an individual that they probably don't want public, that might come up in our conversation, so I thought out of respect to not have that revealed publicly.
But did anybody make a recommendation to us that we should take under advisement? Someone who's on the board, or no? We only have the resumes of.
Of the people.
Right, and, and.
And there's a letter from another.
There's an outside letter not including the member that is to try to persuade us to go one way or another that I felt would not be good to discuss publicly. And there are, in the past, there have been recommendations by, and I can't say who because it was in the exec session, about why we might want to have one type of candidate versus another. So, because this is about personnel, and because there's specifically an issue about an individual that we've got a letter about, I did not feel like it was appropriate to be having those conversations publicly. But that was, it's just my two cents.
Well, that's what the discussion's for. Anybody other discussion?
Can I just?
And, and I think it's five minutes, by the way, I don't think it's like a.
Yeah, no, yeah, exactly.
Can I just say that they did, do have a number to call if you have any questions? I don't know if this is pertaining to whether you decide if it's exec or not.
Any other discussion?
I would just say, I mean, I appreciate all those concerns, I think they're well thought out. I just, my view of this is it's not an appointment, it's an election. So I'd vote against us going to exec.
Okay, any other discussion?
Actually, I don't know if I agree with Chris on the point that the information they forwarded to, except for that letter from the school district is different. If the information that the candidate sent to us wasn't meant to be public. I mean, it's campaign material.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if they wrote it to us with the thought that we'd be making it public. I would hate to make that assumption and embarrass those that sent it to us, or the individual. I, I, I don't know, but I'm not an attorney, I just, it's almost like, you know, what happens in a recommendation with a resume. I'm guessing whether it's good or bad, the assumption is it's not going to be broadcast on TV.
On camera.
On camera, right? You know.
All right, you want to make the motion, Chris?
I make a motion that we adjourn for no more than three minutes in exec session.
Well, don't do that because then we actually have to do three minutes.
Okay, as long as I can get one minute of the three, 30 seconds of the three. But I, I, no more than five minutes of exec session.
For the purpose of?
For the purpose of discussing the candidates and, and our vote-on candidates for the BOSI's positions.
Can I get a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the motion on the floor?
As long as we're in for five minutes. I think it's less.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor, the motion? All right, any opposed? All right, the motion carries. We're going to take a short, five minutes.
You guys stay here, I'm going out here, so.
Thank you, Sandy. Yeah, we got to shut the camera.
I took that book home Monday night after our meeting.
I told her.
Okay, and you know, you want to know when I finished reading it? I was so pissed at myself. Four to four in the morning. And I brought it back the next morning and put it back on the shelf.
So we made a motion to reconvene from exec, we are back in public. Was it less than five minutes?
Yep.
Was it less than three? Can I get a motion to approve business items? We'll do one through four, so that we can do five the way Victoria suggests, right? So can I get a motion to approve business items one through four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the items on the floor? All those in favor? Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a question about one, about the Sagaponic contract.
Yes, we did, we did want to amend the contract, which was a good thought. We had a suggestion from a board member to amend the contract, which I thought was.
What am I missing?
Do we have a written amendment?
Nope.
So you want to pull one? Wait, no, we can do it, we can do it right here.
Paragraph four, on page four, says, once admitted, no student will be denied continuous admission to Sag Harbor U.S.C.D. except for behavior that would result in suspension from school. We discussed this, I understand this is a district-to-district contract, however, I feel like that language is a little wishy-washy, especially when we're talking about being denied continuous admission. My suggestion is to add a clause that says, and, and also, if they no longer reside in the sending district.
In the sending district.
So once admitted, no student will be denied, except for behavior that would result in suspension. And.
Or a change in residency.
But it has to say, it has to say that they're not within the sending district anymore.
Okay.
Is there any, I appreciate you raising that, I think that's an interesting detail. Is there any, is there any specific, I'm not going to say like, could it be more specific? Like, if they move in January versus April, will it be different?
This is, it's a, it's a really good contract, because it's, it defines sending and receiving district what they are, but because this says, once admitted, no student will be denied admission to the Sag Harbor Union Free School District, we'd rather not get in, I think she makes a valid point, not to get into a dance because of that one line. So, once admitted, no student will be denied continuous admission to Sag Harbor Union Free School District except for for behavior that would result in suspension from the school, or.
No longer residing in.
No longer residing in the sending district.
Can I just ask a question about that? What do we care if Sagaponic's paying us to send this student?
No, what I'm talking about is, let's just say, you know, you're in Sagaponic, and the parents are like, oh, let me just see the, the contract you have with Sag Harbor. And they look at this, and they say, oh, look at this, once admitted, you won't be denied. So we can now move to East Hampton, and you still get to go to.
But Sagaponic's supposed to pay us.
But they do not.
But they wouldn't be.
Well, it just could, it just could.
So shouldn't we have language in there that?
Well, no, because then it would go back to their residency policy.
Because it just, it just could, it's worth it to put those five lines in, so.
Then child would have to go to East Hampton School.
Right, so we just, it would be better.
It's not a loophole where they can still go here even if they move out of Sagaponic.
Or even, or even if they move out of Sagaponic and they go to East Hampton, and they say, they want to pay tuition now, I'm automatically there.
Right.
That's not totally.
I think it just, it just.
Okay, I see.
Yep, so I, so all I'm going to add to it, before I send it over to Sagaponic, once you approve it, is that once admitted, no student will be denied continuous admission to Sag Harbor Union Free School District except for for behavior that would result in suspension from school.
And relocation from.
Or no longer residing in the sending district, right?
Or is it relocation from the sending district?
Or no, I'm going to stick with my line.
The editor.
Hide over here. Or no longer residing in sending district.
So I'm hearing a motion on the floor to amend business item number one. Can I get a second for the motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved, any discussion for the motion on the floor to amend business item number one? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries. So now we're back into, in the middle of the motion for business items one through four. Any other discussion for the motion on the floor to approve business items one through four? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Can I get him, do you want to go ahead and read the motion, or, sorry, read the, I don't know if I want to do it, Victoria, I'm sorry.
Business item number five.
Victoria, tell me what to do.
I'm just going to read the resolution, be resolved that the Board of Education of Sag Harbor Union Free School elects five of the following candidates for the Eastern Suffolk Board of Cooperative Education Services. I'm going to read down the list of the nine names.
Do you need a first and a second?
No, we didn't count the last two.
I'm sorry?
I believe, are we supposed to raise our hand?
We need a motion.
Yeah, I need.
We need a motion, we need a first and a second.
You want to pick them first, and then you, then you motion a second on what you picked?
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Thank you, Victoria. Got to explain.
Okay, so I need a show of hands as I read them down. So for Brian Babcock, that's six. Arlene Royce, that's six. Stephen Gussner, that's six. Regina Hunt, zero. Kellyanne Jennings, zero. Joseph Lascavio, zero. James F. McKenna, six. Brian Omealy, that's six. And G. Paul Amore, that's zero. Okay, so now you want to.
Now, we get a motion to approve Brian, Arlene, Stephen, James, and Brian. Second?
Sec.
Any discussion?
Yes, I want to thank all the candidates for being willing to run, and hopefully whoever gets elected, I appreciate their time and commitment, and please give us more services on the extent.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So now we are in public input two.
Dr. Khan.
Yes, and you have to state your name?
Oh, yes.
You need to direct your comments to the board president, know that you're being recorded, know that we may or may not discuss what you bring to the table?
Great, Sandy Kroll, 9:15. Make it quick. Last year's budget ended with a $1.8 million fund balance, correct? In last year's financials. It ended with a surplus of $1.8 million, is that correct? Whoa. Yeah, whoa. So we took out of the 1.8, I'm trying to figure out, so we put back a million into the budget? Because I was not following it, I was, I like to ask questions as well, so it's kind of like in my things, not in my mind, so I'm not understanding it. So that would leave $800,000 that you put back into other funds to, go ahead.
A big part of, remember we did the transportation contract with Wayne Scott, so a large percentage of that fund was where we worked out with Wayne Scott, we were going to do their busing for them, and so all of the revenue we generated from that went into a busing fund, so that that, so that money then went into a transportation fund. So when you saw that revenue kind of piling up towards the end of the year, that was one pile. So there was, there was revenue generated from the transportation contract. So some of that, when you see revenue, and revenue is not always just revenue, so that went into it. That was, that was a planned piece, so it doesn't look like, so there's, it wasn't like money left over at the end of the year. That was revenue that was generated from a contract that we participated in.
But didn't the.
That was one piece.
And didn't the voters vote to create?
Yes, they did.
Those specific transportation costs, that money.
Yeah, I'm speaking of something different, so if I, when I went through the end of the year financials, from audit committees, it was a surplus of $1.8 million left over from last year's budget. And, I was going to call him, but, Doc, sorry. So he's saying now that he moved that money back in to reduce the tax levy of that. So out of that 1.8, what was reinvested back into the other funds?
But I'm going to, I'm going to hold you on, it wasn't leftover 1.8 million.
Well, the surplus is, is.
When, no, so maybe we should, we should do a presentation on that, because we did have the auditors come in and do a full report on that.
Yeah, that was.
Because we do a plan, we do a plan in November with what funds we're going to have left over at the end of the year, and the, and the board votes on that, and one of those plans was creating a transportation fund, because we generated revenue, that wasn't like leftover money, so when you're talking, and I don't think it was 1.8.
Didn't we, we already created a transportation like six years ago.
No, we voted on it last year.
We voted on, in November, you vote on where your revenues are going to go at the end.
No, to create it.
No.
So in November, you create where your, where the funds at the end of the year, if there's, if there's residual funds at the end of the year, but there's also revenues at the end of the year are going to go.
Oh, you're going to sit down, stand back up.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, I do want to caution that we don't need to get into the back and forth.
That's why, because I have, I have other questions, because like I said, this year's budget, it's like, and I can only use the athletic, because I didn't speak at the other ones, because, and again, the administrative team's on here, I could do it next Monday, but I'm not sure I'll be here, but, like, you don't buy new uniforms with the baseball team this year, which we did. And they're, they're great, except for, I'm going to discuss the hat logo after I'm done with that. But we don't need $5,000 next year in that budget line, because we're not going to buy new uniforms again. So I see a lot of rollovers, and I just caution us that, and I know we're taking money, because we have contracts that are still not negotiated, I'm well aware of that. But I just hope that we're not taking that much money and just kind of just put it into like, I don't want to use the word slush fund, because I don't think that's appropriate, but more or less, just had that much of a surplus left at the end of the year. I just think it should be a little bit more conscientious. And today's explanation, I got, but I just needed to ask questions, which I couldn't, just to try to understand it 100%, so that, the hat logo. When did we change the logo? I mean, I've seen it basketball season, I kind of thought it was a little strange, but I didn't see anything. And then I see all the baseball caps this year are a whale tail. It's been a P for, I just saw Willie Coffey from the '78 state championship basketball game, and he's like, what's up? I'm like, yeah, I don't know, I got nothing. So do we have any, can we get back on that?
That's not board level.
Oh, well, I've asked at the other level and got told, I don't know. So if they don't know and you don't know, then that's even a little scarier. So that's another thing, and then board level is, we had a meeting on safe for the community, and we haven't had a follow-up. So I'd like to know when we plan, it was, we're going to gather all the information, Kate's going to take it back to the administrative team, and then we're going to try to get everybody back together to have a conversation about that, that will, I don't know if it was on video that night or not.
I don't know what we're talking about.
At the meeting for safety in schools.
What, after the?
Yeah, safety, not the safe coalition.
Oh, we thought you were talking about safety.
It's all safety, yeah. So that I'm looking forward to, and then, just to clarify, we did hire two custodians last year. One was for Stella Maris, and then Eric was crying they needed another one. So we actually did hire two last year on the budget, so I don't even know if you need to hire the other half, or whatever you were talking about. And then there was one other thing that I wrote down. But I would like a follow, I don't, I would like a follow-up on that, especially after what happened today in Hampton base. An extra security guard, Hampton base, they had a man in the parking lot with a rifle. And it's all over in the news, but it is, I don't want to discuss what happened there, all I'm saying is, I would like to know.
You don't want to discuss it, Sandy, but just a moment. I spoke personally with that superintendent, and we have to be very careful, because when we talk about things that happen at school districts, very often the news makes things inflammatory.
I don't care what it is.
Please don't interrupt the superintendent.
He had it handled, and it was, and it was local, so just, we just.
All I'm saying is that I have not heard back from the Board of Education or the superintendent since that meeting. The information should have been compiled by now, should have been discussed, and it should have come back to the public. That's what I'm asking, I don't think that that's overreacting or anything. I would like to know what came out of that meeting, that's all. Okay?
Have a great night.
We have had security.
Can I just, observation?
What?
I just think it's public comment, it's not public interrogation.
I agree.
And everyone should be given an opportunity to speak and say what they want to say, but it's not.
Well, and that's why I said, and thank you, Alex, for that, that we do need to caution between getting in too much of a back and forth, but I think that when somebody's saying something that isn't true, it's hard not to jump in.
Sure, understood.
Any other items for the business meeting? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, have a great night, my friends.